You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
We'll call this meeting of the Branford Planning Zoning Commission to order. It is Thursday, June 4th, 2020 at 7:01 PM. I will introduce members of our commission and staff, and then I'll turn it over to our staff to review our COVID-19 video rules. So just going through members of the commission. John Luss, John, are you here?
Present.
Thank you, John. And by the way, you're supposed to say your name before you speak, so I'll try to do that every time. Chuck Anders here.
All right, John Luss, present.
Okay, Chuck Anders here. Joe Chadwick, are you here?
Joe Chadwick, present.
Thank you, Joe. Chuck Anders here. Fred Russo, are you here?
Fred Russo, present.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you, Fred. Paul Higgins, are you here, Paul?
I'm present.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you, Paul. And Marcy Paluzzi, are you here?
Marcy Paluzzi, present.
Okay, thank you, Marcy. Chuck Anders here. Chuck Anders here, I am here. Our staff this evening is Harry Smith, our town planner. Harry, are you here?
Harry Smith, town planner, here.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you, Harry.
Chuck.
Caitlin Piazza, our assistant planner. Caitlin, are you here?
Caitlin Piazza is here.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you. Yes?
Joe Vaiuzo here.
Oh, Joe Vaiuzo, Joe. I'm sorry. Joe Vaiuzo, are you here? I'm sorry. I'm looking at faces. All right, I'm very sorry about that. And Joe Vaiuzo is also here. And also, Michelle Martin, clerk from recording cycle. Michelle, are you here?
Yes, Michelle Martin's here.
Okay. I apologize, Joe.
That's good.
Chuck Anders here. Okay, and Caitlin or Harry, do you want to run through the meeting, the rules for participating in? Well, let me do this. Chuck Anders here. First, I'll go through our rules. Our general rules, we have, I believe, two continued public hearings scheduled for our agenda this evening. And we'll follow a normal procedure, which is that the applicant goes first. The applicant can make its presentation with, including its attorney, consultants, anything else they'd like to present. At that point, we turn it over to the commission and staff to summarize staff comments and questions from the commission. At that point, we open it up to the public, and Caitlin will run through what the rules are for that. But again, we ask that you identify yourself. There'll be a way to identify yourself, and that you will be unmuted if you make the comments. And then after the public portion is done, we'll allow the applicant to respond to any comments. And again, we may or may not continue the matter as a public hearing. With that, Caitlin or Harry, can you review again the procedures, because I missed regarding participation in this video zoning meeting?
Harry Smith, town planner. I don't know if you can use the words "traditional" with Zoom meetings, but Caitlin has done such a nice job the last few meetings. We're going to refer to her and do this.
All right, Caitlin Piazza, assistant town planner. Just so everybody knows, this meeting is being recorded by BCTV and myself right now on Zoom. Everyone is muted upon entry, and no one's required to have their video on. To participate in the public hearing portions of this meeting, please be specific to the application you wish to comment on. And you can do that if you're calling in by phone by pressing * or 9. That will raise your hand in the meeting, and you'll be unmuted in the order we see you pop up. For those joining by computer, you have two options. The first is preferable, and that is the raise hand. If you go to the participants bar on the bottom, which you can see by kind of moving your cursor over the bottom portion of the screen, there's a raise hand option in the white chat, our participants box that pops up next to your name. You can also use the chat feature. If you do so, please do that for everyone, not just in a private conversation. Other than that, if everyone can just state their name before they speak each time they speak, that is about it, I believe.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you, Caitlin. With that, we'll move to our first item of public hearing, which is Sound Development Group LLC, Melissa Machero, co-owner, 1151 West Main Street, the special exception site plan, coastal site plan for a new bank and grocery store, and associate grading and earth movement. This is all the application. Mr. Nuff, are you prepared to move forward with this continued public hearing? I guess we need to unmute him.
I am now, now that I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, and I'm obviously here tonight on behalf of Sound Development Group. As you've said, Mr. Chairman, this is a site plan application for a retail building and a bank. Aldes and Chase Bank, to be specific. It's a special exception application for grading, earth removal, and coastal site plan application as well. So all three matters are before you, now. We were last here before you in May 21st. There's been a fair amount of correspondence back and forth between various folks commenting on behalf of the town, as well as Dr. Horn. And we've been responding to those, and we also have a memo from yesterday from your town planner, Harry Smith. So what I think might make the most sense is just as a way of, as an organizing principle, is to run through the various authors of the comments, how we responded, and then turn it over to our team, all of which is here tonight, specifically with regard to engineering and landscaping issues, although our license of our mail is also professional, is with us this evening, as well as our traffic engineer, although no comments were raised with regard to their two realms of expertise. So we're going to focus on stormwater and landscaping for the most part, and with a few other ancillary things. But so let me just run down the comments that we received through the course of the application. So we have two emails from your town engineer, John Hopperly. He opined stormwater and traffic. With regard to stormwater, he concluded that the applicant has satisfied the requirements of section 6.9 of the regulations. The applicant has closely mimicked the existing drainage patterns, has provided a reduction in peak runoff and volume, has provided water quality BNP's through a program. It should also be noted, the applicant has chosen to use NOAA 14 rainfall data as opposed to outdated technical paper 40 data along by the stormwater manual. This accounts for greater rainfall intensity than what is required. He also opined about the traffic data. As he says, since the developers are proposing modifications to a state highway, he will defer to the state's industry view of the traffic. You know, since then, we also, you know, we presented a slide deck at the hearing last two weeks ago. And since then, we actually supplied a copy of our traffic report. A traffic report under your regulations isn't required, but we provided it anyway. Harry was kind enough to send that to John again, and John's comment remains, which is he's going to defer to the state's review and comment. So no issues with regard to stormwater or traffic from your town engineer. We also had a bit of back and forth with your outside consultant planner, Mike Demato. He had issued a report on May 20th that had a total of 16 different comments. We replied in a memo that I'm sure that you've been provided from BL Companies. That reply is dated May 29th. And then Mr. Demato responded to our response, and there were five outstanding items. Three, which were landscaping, one in terms of traffic maneuvering, and one is just about our light poles, which, but he eventually concludes that he recommends approval.
Good day, everyone.
Yes? So Josh Smith will be going through Mike Demato's comments with a little more detail, but I just wanted to note again that he ends up recommending approval after taking into account some of those five comments that he raises in his June 3rd memo. We've also received some submission by, I think, two submissions by Dr. Horn. And Josh Smith has provided a comprehensive response to Dr. Horn with regard to stormwater. Again, I remind you that your own town engineer supports our stormwater design, as well as obviously your Inland Wildlife Commission. As noted last time, the commission had hired a third-party reviewer that scoured our application, particularly with regard to stormwater, and eventually obviously approved it. So then the last memo that we received was from Harry Smith. We received that yesterday. You know, he's very helpful, very detailed, of course. You know, he indicates that, he recommends that the application, if you deem to close the hearing tonight, that you continue the meeting itself until June 18th so he can, you know, prepare a motion to approve. His memo is very detailed, however. It lists all the various conditions of approval. I know this may be a little bit out of the norm, but for candidly transactional reasons, as we go through the presentation, I would ask you to think about whether you could in fact vote tonight. It would be very important to us. We would understand if you felt that you needed some more time, but as I said, you know, as you go through, as we go through the various comments, and if you feel that there's certain things that we can address through conditions of approval, and certainly Harry has done a good job outlining those things, we would really appreciate your consideration of voting tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Schmitz, or Schmitty, as we all know him. And he can go through the various responses to the three different memos I gave.
Hi, good evening, everyone. The record, John Schmitz, civil engineer with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Meriden, Connecticut. If I can share my screen, I'd like to show you some of the plans that we revised. So, let's see. Okay, so to start with, John alluded to the memo that we had submitted. We provided a revised memo last Friday, May 29th, in response to town comments, as well as some plans. So I'm just going to briefly run through those and show you, highlight for you where the plans were revised to address the comments. Comment was related to the 80-foot setback from the center line of Route 1, and we add that to the plan. I'll just show you. Here, you'll see the, you should see the site plan here along West Main Street. We added, we determined where the center line of the road was, and then moved 80 feet off of that line. Trying to draw in roughly a red line. This is approximately where the 80-foot setback falls. And under the regulation, we have to look at what is the worst-case setback? The center line setback or the standard setback in the zone, which is 15 feet? And in this case, the 15-foot setback would govern, because that's the worst-case scenario for us. So we've been using a 15-foot setback, but we did add the line on there just to show everybody where that is. We also looked at the front landscaping, and what we could do to increase that, try to get more into compliance with the front landscaping. Wayne Violet, our landscape architect, is on the call. I'll let him get into the specifics. But I did just point out that one of the things we did with the plans, I'll flip through the truck turning plan, TT1. What we did was we took a look at how we could try to revise the turning movements for the truck, and we were able to tighten it up a little bit. This driveway at this location, this drive aisle, rather, the original application was 34 feet wide. We've been able to narrow that down to 30 feet. So what we did was we were able to gain back four feet of space, and we applied that four feet in this area to add more green space along the front, where before we were around eight feet. We now got 12 feet of green space between the property line and the parking, which doesn't include green space in the right-of-way, which we're not allowed to count. Just moving along, another comment about the frontage, the street trees. I'll let Wayne talk a little bit about it, but I just wanted to point out one item with the frontage, and that is that we have about 666 feet of frontage end-to-end. And that would be from here on the left side of the page all the way to here, the right side, where we hit the Amtrak right-of-way by the bridge. You'll note that on the right side of the plan, we have Mill Creek in this area, as well as the, as well as stonework that was installed by the state as part of the reconstruction of Mill Creek and the bridge in general. We really can't physically plant trees in the creek along the frontage here on our property. So we have a little bit of a unique situation here in that we have a problem where we cannot physically plant trees in the rock or in a creek. And then along the frontage of Aldes, the parking in this location I just spoke about, we have a sewer line easement, and we're trying to keep all of the trees out of that sewer easement, so not to create issues in the future with that sewer line. Proceeding down, there was comments about rear landscaping, side landscaping to residential zones. We feel that based on the existing vegetation that's out there today, that there's sufficient landscaping available on both side yards, as well as the rear yard. In fact, the rear yard is over 500 yards, or about 530 feet away from the rock cut behind the building, and is hidden from the front of the site by a ridge line that runs across the site in a west direction. So you can't even see from the rear of the site to the front due to that high ridge line. There was also a comment about the planting beds. We did add a note to the landscaping plan, just to note that we are in compliance from a technical standpoint, that we do meet over 25% of the circumference of the building. We've had a lot of discussions. I'll go back to the site plan. We've had some discussions about how we could increase this. And one of the things we will have to do as we move forward with a revised plan as a condition of approval, we've identified that these three parking spaces here can slide forward away from the building, which would allow us to put in some landscaping strip here, about 30 feet long, four feet wide, where we could put landscaping directly against the building in the road. And that would be something we have to provide as part of a revised plan, a condition of approval. We also added bicycle racks that were requested to the front of the building. Added two bicycle racks. Also added a detail for those racks. The detail plan was commented regarding plantings on top and bottom of the retaining wall. I'm going to let Wayne Violet speak about that a little later on, and give you some more detail about that. I believe that eventually, we'll probably have to work out with staff the final design of what will be acceptable in those areas. Comment number seven had to do with the vehicle queuing. You recall the discussion at the last hearing about whether or not the ATM was qualified as a drive-through? And it was discussed that at Zane Cycles had a similar instance, and the bank ATM was not considered a drive-through. And we know that we do provide about five site plan. We do have about five spaces to stack from the ATM. A sixth space would just partially block the last parking spot there. So we're more or less almost providing six spaces today. Just moving forward, the erosion control plan. That information was already provided on sheet EC6. Turney Nuff spoke a little bit about the coastal site plan reviews before you. Comment number two here had to do more about providing some additional information, outlining the criteria, the special exception criteria, which I included at the end of the memo. And I won't go through all of those. There are like 15 of those, but just note that they're in the memo. There was questions about circulation and site lighting. Let's go back to the site plan. We propose to keep the circulation as is in this area today. It's two-way circulation in the parking area between the two buildings. There's also lighting here and here. There were comments from, in the conditions of approval, that talked about having revised lighting plans submitted based on buildings. So we're going to look to see what we can do to possibly move those lights further away. Originally, the lights were put in to have thorough coverage throughout the site, so that we have consistent coverage in the parking areas, but we may have some opportunities to slide those lights around. And there's another question, a comment rather, about the sidewalks. Sidewalks, encouraged pedestrian uses. And we do, we provide signage. There will be pedestrian phase for crosswalks, so folks can cross by pushing a button at the intersection when they get there. As well as parking, there were comments regarding the number of parking. And as discussed at the last meeting, the tenants have already indicated that the amount of parking is what they require for their operations to operate standard. And then, of course, number five just had more to do with the rock area and the rock catch. We provided some additional information. We put together a detail that was on sheet DN3, which highlighted how the rock catch would be constructed. It's really a safety item for any loose rock in the future that potentially would slide down the slope. It catches the rocks so that it wouldn't end up in the parking lot. So again, more of a safety issue there. And the rest of the letter is really just some of the comments outlining section 9.8.1F, the criteria, and how we comply with the various items that you'd be looking at as far as that goes. With regard to the stormwater, we also responded to comments. Dr. William Horn had submitted a letter, and I just want to kind of briefly address some of his comments.
This is Harry Smith. John, I can't hear you anymore, and you've frozen in your video. Caitlin, it's Harry Smith. I'm trying to unmute him. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, you got me back. Okay.
All right.
That was strange. So I just wanted to highlight that area where the basin is. It's behind the bank, to the south of the bank. And what we did was, in the drainage...
God, Harry Smith just interrupted. We lost your share screen as well.
Okay. Let's see. Give me a sec to get that back. Okay, I think you should be able to see it again now. See. Here we go.
Harry Smith again. It's all set, John.
Okay, so John Schmitz again, just showing the site plan, the rendered site plan. The area we're discussing before I dropped out is the basin to the south, rather, of Chase Bank. It's also on top of the rock, on top of the rock cut. There's a wetlands there today. It holds a 100-year storm, the volume of a 100-year storm today. And what we also did was look at that for the future condition, the post-development condition, and determine that it could also hold a 100-year storm in the future. There would be no overflow from it. It can hold that entire volume. Increasing that area to hold more than a 100-year storm would have impacts on the wetland area, which gets into issues with prudent feasible alternatives, where we're required to have the smallest impact on the wetlands. And so what we've done is only to do what's necessary to hold a 100-year storm. We haven't gone beyond that. We're only required to deal with a 100-year storm, and that's what we've done. Just back to the letter. So again, we did address that. The report contains the documents. I've included the actual calculations in the response letter. Co-despotian Associates, who was the third-party peer reviewer for Inland Wetlands, reviewed that, as well as the town engineer, and determined that what we've done in that instance is acceptable. Now, as I noted, the area does get smaller. We're filling wetlands. The watershed gets smaller. It's approximately a half acre smaller. And so since the water is no longer going there, it has to go somewhere else. That half acre of land has now become tributary to the Mill Creek. And so to account for that, that additional flow, we've increased the size of our underground detention system and infiltration. And as the report shows, we still maintain, we're still lower rather than the existing peak rate runoff, as well as the volume of runoff. We're still below those numbers. So even though we've added a half acre watershed into the Mill Creek watershed, we're still maintaining the existing, below the existing peak rate and volumes. And just to kind of wrap things up with that, there was also questions, called into question what we had used as far as rainfall data. Basically, rainfall data is the input that we use into the model to determine how much water is coming out of the sky. It's an estimate that's used. And under the town regulations, we're required to use the Connecticut DOT Drainage Manual. DOT Drainage Manual directs us what to use in a standard storm, standard model. What we're told to use is TR 55, Technical Release 55, which is our modeling software that's used, and to use the NOAA 14 rainfall data. I did include, just for purposes of, just a little backup, is the document from DOT, state DOT, where they mentioned that they want, starting back in November 2015, that they want everyone to be using the NOAA 14 precipitation frequency estimate. And then that they also note that that should be used in all applications where the Drainage Manual data would have been used. And again, the town engineer also agreed with that analysis that we did use the appropriate rainfall data for our analysis. So that kind of briefly outlines the revisions to the plans that were made the last couple of weeks. Very minor overall, but not insignificant. And what I'm going to do is just throw things over to Wayne Violet, who's our landscape architect, and let Wayne, he may want to share his screen, and just kind of go in a little bit more detail on some of the changes we made to the landscaping.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wayne Violet, senior landscape architect with BL Companies. I will share my screen in a moment just to briefly walk through some of the outstanding landscape-related comments. John highlighted a few of them. I'll try to bring some more depth to a couple of them. And then, as always, you guys might have comments later that we can always address. So I'm going to share my screen, and we're only going to look at one particular plan, which will be a black-and-white landscape plan that we might look in different areas. So the first comment actually relates to our tree protection plan, which had been submitted previously. And the outstanding comment related to identifying a 50-foot buffer surrounding trees to remain, just providing illustration for that 50-foot buffer. We are going to do that. That's a pretty minor comment for us to address. So we will add that 50-foot buffer. That plan currently identifies all significant trees to remain with tree protection. So we'll certainly add that 50-foot buffer for illustration purposes. That plan does indicate trees to be removed on the plan. I know that was one of the comments there, so we just wanted to address that. Another comment that's outstanding to do, and John mentioned a little bit, about plantings on top of the retaining walls. So just to zoom into our plan here, we're going to zoom in here So just to zoom into our plan here, we're going to zoom in here just to the west of the, all these northwest corner of the building where we have a proposed retaining wall. The high side of the retaining wall would be the site side or the parking lot side. We are now proposing plantings other than simple lawn or conservation seed mix on the top of that lawn. The challenge in this area, which I just wanted to highlight, getting into little nuts and bolts, but the highlight is we have a top of retaining wall, a fence and a guide rail. So we selected a low maintenance, low growing, a low grow sumac, native, natural, really good hardy for that particular area to thrive at the top of the wall there. If there's other species that are preferred, we're open, but we think this one will be a good one for that particular narrow zone, difficult to plant site. So we have addressed that comment of adding plantings at the top of the retaining wall that are different from just simple lawn or conservation seed mix, which is typically lawn and grasses and wildflowers. The next comment is about the street trees along West Main Street. Per code, it's street trees 50 feet along the frontage. We are proposing trees in front of the parking lot area for Aldis right in this general zone and as well as the parking lot area in front of the Chase Bank along the frontage. As John had mentioned, we are not proposing street trees in the vicinity of the water course and wetland area on the western side of the site. Feasibility is just not possible. We are proposing street trees at or greater than 50 feet on center to really what we think meets and comply with the intent of that regulation. Those street trees that are proposed, we're contending with some underground sewer easements as well as overhead utility lines. So we have selected species that we think will handle those kind of conditions, tight conditions, but really provide an attractive kind of gateway for the entrance to the site along West Main Street. In addition to that area, this may have been suggested and discussed at last meeting in May. We have added a native shrub hedgerow along the parking area and front of the Aldis right here. So we've chosen a couple of species, including a inkberry holly and a red twig dogwood to give you a bit of a alteration in plant material, interest to the eye, to continue to add to that gateway where we'll have that kind of large manicured lawn area represented in the wide right of way, followed up by a neat, attractive and native hedgerow. In addition to multiple street trees along the frontage to what we think create an attractive, attractive scheme for the entrance to this facility as well as the gateway element that, that many have mentioned for this particular site. So that was a change that is different from last time we had spoken. John had mentioned, I just wanted to give a little bit more detail about the buffering needed alongside and rear of the, of the site itself along the eastern facade. This is similar to what we were proposing last time, same actually. We're proposing a evergreen tree buffer along the eastern property line. That's currently will be disturbed and unvegetated. We're proposing a greater than five foot buffer along that property line to really provide some nice screening at the top of the slope, looking into the site. And that's what you're seeing, this cluster of proposed plantings that's running kind of vertically on the page in this zone. Along the western property line to comply with that zoning requirement, we are also proposing plantings where the site disturbance and where that existing buffer is narrowest along the western facade, and that's at the southwestern corner of the proposed Aldis. Those plantings are proposed in this zone, and we might've walked through that last time, but just a quick refresher. We're planting evergreen plant material in there again, where our buffer is the thinnest and where that evergreen screening is most needed. John had mentioned along the southern end of the site, we're keeping as much vegetation as possible. Only disturbance is understory growth for the wetland mitigation creation areas. Outside of that, existing vegetation along the southern end of the site will remain and we think will be in compliance with that zoning regulation of needing a minimum of a five foot landscape buffer for side and rear lot lines. Regarding the planting beds in business zones around the circumference of the building, the Chase Bank was never in question and that still complies to this day. We're, I have a lot of planting beds around that facility. For the proposed Aldis, we've been proposing greater than 25% landscape area along the southern facade. So the outstanding comment was whether the commission would allow that. Currently, we're showing this southern facade again, greater than 25% currently shown as lawn. We agree and are willing to add plantings, foundation plantings along that facade if desired as one of the conditions. So that's on the table. We certainly didn't start with that because again, it's on the southern facade and less visible from the public eye. John had mentioned that one of the very current condition, site, site changes that may be enacted is in this front corner, and that does provide an opportunity for some more public eye foundation plantings, and we would certainly add that there. But in either case, well over the 25% that's required. And last comment, outstanding comment that we just wanted to address was from the Clean Energy Committee. Shirley McCarthy had provided some comments about the use of native plant material on the site. We strive to use native plant material wherever we can, and for the most part, the site does contain native plant material. There are two species exceptions that we've chosen for this particular site for performance, for high visibility that are not native. We are certainly open to swapping those out, but our belief at the time then and now is we're using native species where we can. And those two exception species are thundercloud plum and the quonzen flowering cherry. For the most part, forced into the front of the site to really give high, high visibility, high, high aesthetic value as far as looks and design towards the manicured areas of the site. But anywhere that's more of the natural area as we push towards the sides and the rear of the site, all native plant material are proposed for those areas. So we just wanted to mention that we are using native plant species where appropriate. So again, that's a quick run through of some of the outstanding landscaping comments. We can always address questions after, but I was going to pass it back to Attorney John Neff for closing remarks.
Thank you, Caitlin, for unmuting me. Before we turn it over to Harry or the commission for questions, I just want to make a couple last notes with regard to our neighbor Rockledge Condominiums. If you recall that you have a letter of support from the condo association and their counsel Frank Pelosi spoke in favor of our application at last month's hearing. In terms of Harry's memo, item number six, he indicates that we would need your approval if we want to have a rock crusher on sites. And he references section 6.8. G of your regulations. That's that regulation entitled fixed machinery requires certain location requirements for rock crushing, and we would certainly comply with that. So while he indicates that we would need your approval pursuant to section 6.8. G, we would certainly comply with the requirements of where that crusher would be located. Also, just to reinforce what Wayne and John Schmitz have told you with regard to the requirement, and this is also in Harry's memo, this is item 10K Roman I of the requirement of having a street tree every 50 feet along the frontage. Your landscape regulations, section 6.3. L certainly allow you to revise the landscaping requirements where it deemed, where it's deemed to be appropriate. Certainly in this case, when we have the rip rap along the, along the stream and the other issues that we're confronting, it would be appropriate for you to reduce that 50 foot requirement for street trees. The whole team is here. We're happy to answer any questions. As I noted, we're fine with virtually everything in Harry's memo. The, the only things that we have any concerns about are in that section 10K and the three Romans, Romans one, two, and three, one with regard to street trees, and then also, you know, adding further landscaping and working with Harry. I mean, we're, we're more than happy to work with Harry, but we're sort of at the limit of, of what we can do in terms of landscaping. So we're happy to have a conversation with the commission about that. But you know, we appreciate Harry's very comprehensive memo. We have no concerns about any of the things that he raises in there. But in terms of landscaping the site, I think we've gone to the absolute max that we, that we can. I would also note specifically, specifically with regard to Aldis and the 25% requirement, obviously they have shopping cars and it just makes it operationally very, very difficult to add any other landscaping around the perimeter of that building other than where Wayne and John Schmitz have indicated that it is. So with that, you know, we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Neff. Before we turn it over for questions from the commission, Chuck Anders here. Harry, is there anything you'd like to summarize or, or comment on from your staff report or any other matters?
Sure, again, Harry Smith Town Planner. Just to hit a couple of highlights that weren't covered in the presentation. The traffic flow on site, I think this was covered a bit, but I just wanted to elaborate a bit and say, I talked to the consulting planner, Mike D'Amato this afternoon, and they, the comments still exist. They still stand by the comment. However, and just to elaborate a little, they believe, you know, the, the traffic flow with the two-way flow and the 90 degree spaces is awkward and presents a number of necessary turns into the bank. For example, somebody coming into the site and some interaction points between cars and pedestrians that maybe could be reduced. And, and lights and crosswalks and what have you. They do appreciate the comments of the applicant's engineer and understand the constraints involved. It's certainly not something they would recommend the commission base at denial upon. And it appears that there's, you know, other than massively reworking the design, there's, there's not that much they could do about, you know, not that much that could be done about that traffic flow pattern without, again, massively redesigning the project and possibly even going back to wetlands. So I think that the main word there is awkward and, you know, maybe we'll all find out how awkward as time goes on and we use the facility, but I'll just leave that there. With respect to landscaping, I appreciate the difficulty or impossibility of lining the entire frontage with street trees. I will point out though, that the street trees are required to be what's called canopy trees. They're defined in the regulations as a tree that is at least 35 feet at mature height, generally a shade tree. The pears that are proposed, I'll defer to Mr. Violet, but I'm not sure they qualify as canopy trees per se. So I think what has been required in other projects is sort of a uniform line of trees. I think that could be done here. Particularly along the Aldis frontage where you've got a couple of trees in the parking lot islands. If you added a couple of trees in between the parking lot islands, you could create a row of basically street trees lining the frontage where possible. I do think the addition of the hedgerow there is what frankly I was looking for to screen the headlights from the parking spaces that face out into Route 1. I think that treatment could be carried along the bank frontage just to make it more uniform. That I think would start to get even closer to trying to achieve a gateway of something a little more uniform along the whole development frontage of the site. I don't know what the commission feels. I mean, some of this is a little bit subjective. I did provide for the commission, the comments from, or a comment from the plan of construction development about the need for gateways. I know a comment was raised by a member of the public about this. So I think just a little bit more attention to it could sharpen it up even more and make it, you know, without a lot more, without a real impact on the site layout. One that I think everyone was looking for. Plan of concentration development was discussed. Let's see, with respect to lights, I just had a question about the height of the poles. Again, I did not review all this directly, so I, this may have been covered previously, but could someone on the development team just let me know how high they're going to be? Is it 30 foot? And I think everyone might be muted at this point. I don't know. John, I think you're unmuted.
This is, this is John Schmitz with BL. I'll confirm the pole height and can I answer that question in a minute or two? I just have to check the plan height, the plan and get back to you.
I'll keep going on. Let's see, just a couple of notations from the comments that were made of respect again, landscaping to the planting beds. You know, the adding plantings to the south and even towards the railroad side of the Aldis building, I think probably have little benefit as well. But I think a little bit more work maybe could be done in the front. I appreciate the potential addition of landscaping on the northwest corner. I've seen in other developments where they do very narrow planting beds right against the building wall and possibly have a plant that grows up on a trellis just to provide a little greenery and softening in a way that might not negatively impact the amount of space in front of the building or storage of anything or display of anything. That could be something that could maybe what that. Let's see. The lighting, I think that was touched on. I did not see any lights proposed along the building, which I imagine there would be. So that would need to be added in the lighting analysis and just sort of had a catchall condition there. Just little comments about like the dumpster, looking for something different than chain link and slats, which I think could be accommodated and so there's a problem with that. With respect to the planting along the top of the retaining wall, I've also seen in other places where they, and I don't know the species of the plants involved, but something that grows along top of the wall and sometimes drapes over the wall, just sort of a creeping kind of plant. I don't know if sumac meets that criteria or not, but something like that possibly could be added to it. Let's see. So with respect to the rock crusher, that's something I think should be carefully considered given the, the condominium neighbors to the east of the project. I know that could possibly be limited in terms of number of hours, but I did not anticipate that with my conditions. And just getting to those, I provided those more as a, something for the commission to have should they want to proceed tonight. My preference would be to massage those and look at those a little more closely. I did them fairly quickly to be honest and clear about it. And hopefully I caught everything, but I, I would like a little more time to do that. I think that would certainly be useful, particularly if any other issues are brought up tonight that haven't been brought up previously. So with that, I think I'll pause and see what the commission has the same terms comments. Thank you.
Chuck Anders here, thank you, Harry. Okay, at this point, we'll turn it over for comments or questions from the commission. I'll start with one, one issue that hasn't been discussed a lot, and that's the traffic. No reason I'm raising this now. I, I think we didn't have the traffic report at the time of the last public hearing. We just got it now. And here's the disclaimer is that you guys are locating in a terrible area. That is, you got four lights right in a row and it's zone commercial. It's, it's notorious. It's nothing you created. It's just, it's, it's there. And you know, your site plan application, you're under 20,000. So I, I get all that and it's state roads, except for commercial parkway, that's a local road. So I, I, I understand the constraints that you're dealing with. That said, when I looked at the report, it does note that there is a drop of level in service and you know, we got a few Fs that didn't exist before. And I, I don't, you know, and I know it's going to be reviewed by OSTA. I, I don't know what they can do and I don't know what they will do. So the one issue that I was probably most concerned about was the left turn into the site. If you're going westbound, if you're coming from Starbucks and going, making a left into there. And I assume, I don't know how much your traffic is coming from that direction. The, the, there's only room for like two cars. That, that lane is a very, it's, it's just not much. So if you had five cars in a, in a light change wanting to get in, that would just, that would back things up into the next lane. Well, I, I'm wondering if your traffic engineer can address that issue in particular. And then perhaps if you then perhaps if your attorney or, or your engine, traffic engineer, I know BL has had experience looking into this whole intersection, can, can say what, what is, what is OSTA likely to do, or is there anything more they could require? So that's kind of a broad-ended question, but maybe, I don't know, I mean, if you can respond to that right now, that'd be great, and then we'll get to other, other commission members.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Mike Sheppini's here from BL, he's our traffic engineer, and as he indicated last time, he probably knows his intersection better than anyone else in the world, frankly.
That's right. I mean, what, I mean, what's going to happen is OSTA will come back and they will, we have to go through and actually re-time the signals, they'll, they'll ask us to do so. They'll require us to mitigate, mitigate the intersection as much as we physically can out there. What's really, I mean, most times you're not going to really see any backups out there. The storage length is adequate enough for most periods during the day. And I, I could tell you that the hardware is very conservative. So I am comfortable with going to OSTA and they will probably have us look at this, and later on, this is, this is just a short-term solution to the problem. We are actually looking at currently, on commercial parkway, trying to implement the plans of the Branford Connector Corridor Study. We're working at, you know, basically spacing out the intersections further. Commercial parkway will probably stay in the same place it is now, but it will be moved up further up there, relocated, so we have more space and it'll be more storage length. So for now, this, this will be, it will be adequate enough probably for OSTA. I mean, we're going to be under their, their overview, so they will tell us ultimately what they have, what they want from us. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, Chuck, Chuck, that gives me an overview of the OSTA, and also it's good to point out the, the longer-term solution, which is frankly to eliminate one of these lights, which would help, and, and that's what I'm looking at. Who knows when that'll happen? But what about particularly the left turn into the site? Because that, that is something, if it's just a matter of people got to wait longer for the light to turn, I can get that. But, but if, if you got just the left turn and people start getting into other lanes, it gets to be more of a safety, at least, might have. Is that likely to be a problem, or what do you think?
Well, well, let's, let's look at it here. So I gotta, I have to look at my report. Let's see, so you're talking about the Route 1 southbound or westbound side. So we have commercial street here, Saturday midday.
I'm looking at Table 6, that had the summary.
Right, yeah, I'm looking at it too.
It looks like it's 50 feet, the length is 50 feet, I have like two cars, and it looks like it's coming from, it's not huge now. So the problem is, it's a vacant site, so you didn't, it's, but once, once you put anything there, it's going to have some problems, understand that. I don't know what, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, so we're going to lengthen it as much as we can, reduce the other side for the Starbucks, because, you know, you're, you're playing, you have a limited amount of space there, so we're doing as obviously can to, to lengthen the storage length there, okay? So what will probably happen is people will still back onto, onto Route 1, but things there should be able to hold that as, as much as physically possible there. What will probably happen as well is, is they'll, they'll, also will have a look at the signal timings. We've done that as, as much as possible now, we may actually have to change cycle lengths out there. It's all up to OSTA when we go through the corruption permit process.
Okay, I, I didn't know if in your data you were able to tell if there would be a stacking problem, if two cars is enough for a left turn at a peak hour on a Saturday or Friday, I don't, you know, for, for an intersection, I, I don't know. I didn't know if your, your own analysis, you thought it was a problem, or you thought maybe it's okay? Because I think, Chuck, you're steering, there's, there's a similar left turn into Starbucks that is also pretty, you know, that's only like two cars, but I, I would think the traffic volume, even what you, you guys are doing, would be more than Starbucks.
So say that one more time, I, you, we're kind of up there. Just say that one more time. I heard, you, you were talking about the length of the box, right? But then, what were you talking about, were you talking about the left turn not being long enough to get into the Aldi site? Is that, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, that, that's the main thing, because, you know, again, it's just having a two length, it looks like two cars, and maybe you can stretch it to three, I don't know, maybe you can configure it. Is that really enough?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're physically moving the storage length as far back as we possibly can. So based on what we have out there now, we're going to be able to fit three cars in there, all right?
Okay, okay. So you're, okay, so you widened it to three, okay. And we'll see what OSTA, OSTA says, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Chuck Anders, Chair, other members' questions from, or comments from other members of Hearing none, Marcy, do you have any thoughts on the landscaping?
I think it's conforming to the, I'm going to be losing here. I think it's conforming to the regulations. I think they've got a broad buffer at the front, which I think will be a type of gateway, and it's all right just because of the space that's there, that that's well manicured, you know? Not every gateway has to have things put in it to create a sense of entry. I think, you know, they could take those opportunities along the building foundation. I certainly don't think that the entire foundation requires landscaping, but, you know, I, I'm more impressed with the off-site, you know, areas around the wetlands and the mitigation and, and those kinds of things, and if there's native species in there, I think that that's going to get the job done, and I certainly don't think that we need to have native species in areas where the parking lots are necessarily, because those are man-made areas. So I, I concur with the approach that they've taken, and I think it's a good solution overall, generally speaking.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Marcy. Any other questions or comments from commission members before we open it up to the public?
If there's none, Mr. Chairman, if there are no more commission questions, I think Wayne Violet can respond to some of Harry's comments, and, and, and which may be instructive for the public as well, particularly the, the requirement for the street trees and, you know, maximum heights.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Nuff, that's a good suggestion.
Thank you, Wayne Violet, Landscape Architect, BL Company. So just to try to go one by one, starting with the street trees, I want to share my screen because I think it's going to be helpful for everyone to see here. Oh, don't look at the desktop, it's pretty busy. All right, here we go. So this is the landscape plan. What I tried to highlight here is, so the, the comment was street trees and consistency, and can we add more street trees to the front of the Aldi's parking area? We certainly evaluated that, and, and the proposed landscape plan that we have, we think does the, the best job that we possibly can to create that gateway to comply with the zoning regs. So to take a look at this area, I have two general things highlighted. The yellow highlight represents overhead, existing overhead power lines and things that exist in the area. When we see those, we try to use certain types of species. I do realize that the requirements for canopy trees are there, but when we have existing overhead utility lines, we, we try to consider species that are going to tolerate that kind of condition, either being narrower or being in size. So what we have for plantings in this area for trees, that is, the ARs, which are shown here and here, those are a hedge maple variety, which gives you some of that great maple coloring, but doesn't get as large as a typical, you know, 40, 50-foot tall cultivar maple. Will stay a little bit more tidy in those areas. The blue highlight, so the yellow highlight is overhead utility lines that exist in the area. The blue highlight is an actual existing utility easement that unfortunately we're unable to plant trees in, which I know one of the comments was maybe adding a couple trees to fill in the gaps to create some consistency. And just in the current configuration, that's, that's not going to work for this particular area. So I just wanted to go through that, so it was really clear of, you know, we definitely evaluated it and, and considered it, but there's a lot of utilities, not only just the highlights, there's even more than that. There's a lot of utilities in that front area, and we're trying to put these trees and plants where we can and where we know that they'll thrive and really be that gateway for a long time for the town. So that was one of the comments. The second comment, I would think we would agree to, and it certainly could be an addition, condition that we would add, which was the idea of we've added this native shrub hedgerow along the Aldi's parking lot side, could we either carry that scheme over or a similar type of scheme to the other side of the parking lot? We would certainly agree to that. So if that's a condition, that, that's not an issue. That was that comment. Relating to the planting beds, yeah, I, I appreciate the recognition that, you know, putting foundation plantings on a non-public side is just probably not preferable or not ideal. I think we've evaluated with the, with the tenant with Aldi's as far as putting plantings against the building, and typically they just turn into more trash collectors than anything. We do recognize that in some, some areas and some retail spaces, that works out really well, having narrow planting spaces up against the building. In this, in this area, it may be difficult. One thing I will point out is the kind of darkened black dashed line that's there in the corner does represent an overhead canopy on that area, so that does limit some potential of what you could possibly do sustainably in that area. So just wanted to highlight that. And then the last comment, which really, it really excites me when people start asking about plant species, because then I know it's exciting. So the question about retaining wall, top of retaining wall species, we've selected sumac, we think this area is going to be a challenge to plant, and sumac, the low-growth sumac, which is a great cult of, great fall color, stays low, stays tidy, it's really going to occupy that space and do well. However, I will say that if it's a condition of, of doing a different planting, we've had some success with Virginia creeper and similar locations at the top of retaining wall. If you're unfamiliar with Virginia creeper, when you let it go for a period of time, it'll creep over that wall, kind of create a little bit of, you know, plant and wall conditions from views on the wall side. So, you know, as a condition, if that's a species that wants to be swapped out or mixed in, we would certainly be, be fine with that. We've had some success using that plant species. So just wanted to hit, hit some of those comments that were thrown out there. I think all, all minor in nature from our end, but I just wanted to point them out. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. And, Mr. Chairman, just two other things, very, very quickly, that Harry referenced. With regard to the traffic flow, my client, and in fact, I were both on calls since the last hearing with both Chase and Aldi's, and I would tell you, retailers hate one-way traffic. People inevitably go the wrong way, they frankly really despise it. You know, this is a, not a typical condition. Our two tenants are absolutely happy with the, the traffic flow that's proposed, they're adamantly opposed to one-way traffic, and certainly they have experience in dozens, if not hundreds, of different locations, and they're, they're absolutely fine with the traffic flow in that area as proposed. And then with regard to Harry's concern about rock crushing and rock ledge, you know, we began meeting with the condo association back before our wetland application, I think in November, December, and had a couple of different meetings with them, really, really wonderful people, very friendly, open-minded, came to a, a very good agreement that holds our feet to the fire, but they are happy with this well in terms of our hours of operation and blasting and all those things. And so I don't think there's any concern with regard to any noise impacts on rock ledge. So I just wanted to update you on those two things. And again, I'm going to ask if the commission's comfortable to seriously consider taking a vote tonight with the various conditions that Harry has recommended, with, you know, with the exception of the one with regard to the street trees.
Chuck, Chuck Anders, Chair, thank, thank you, Mr. Nuff. Just one question on, you mentioned you had an understanding with the condo association. Were there specific hours of operation that you guys agreed to?
Yes, and nothing on weekends, starting later than typical, ending earlier. In fact, I was, you know, looking, I, I don't have my transactional file with me, I have my zoning file with me, but yes, there are limited hours and limited days, and obviously pre-blast survey requirements and things like that, so.
Okay, yeah, Chuck Anders, Chair, and would you object if we included those as conditions of approval?
Well, it's, it's a binding contract, so it would be redundant, but, you know, I'd be happy to see if I can go dig it out and, and after the public comments, I can give you what those hours are. But, I mean, I mean, we are pledged to comply with those requirements, and so therefore we would have no objection to including those conditions, and on the other hand, nothing is necessary, but.
Chuck Anders, Chair, great, thank you. I mean, when we have an inert removal, hours of operation are, are conditions, I think that's probably in the regs themselves, but sometimes we play with them a little bit. Okay, any other questions or comments from members of the commission? Seeing none, then, we'll open it up to the public. Are there members of the public that wish to comment? And Caitlin, why don't you review again how the public can participate?
Caitlin Piazza, Assistant Town Planner, so you can participate by phone by pressing star nine, and you can participate, if you're using the computer, by either going down and hovering below the screen and going to the chat, and that can go to everyone, or if you press participants, the white screen will pop up on the right-hand side, and there should be an option to raise hand. Okay, I just saw Shirley McCarthy kind of waved her hand, so I'll go with that, and then I'll probably unmute the number ending in 0018.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Shirley McCarthy. I would just like to comment that Violet on his landscaping plan and using natives, I think that's great. I think your thoughts about native sumac with Virginia creeper would be very good for the birds, and I think it's important to use as many natives as possible, as you likely know, because we have to support our native insects and birds, and native plants support the ecosystem. Is there any way you could substitute that quinza and cherry for something else? Because that has very little wildlife value, not along with trees.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank, thank you, Ms. McCarthy. We will ask the applicant to address that when, when we're done with the public comment. Do you have any other?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Chuck Anders, Chair, okay. Other members of the public, yes, I see. Well, I'll let Caitlin, you know, recognize who's coming next.
Caitlin Piazza, phone number 0018, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. It's Franklin Pelosi, and I represent Rockledge. I spoke in support on behalf of Rockledge at the last public hearing session, and I'm calling now to state that Rockledge has no objection to the rock crushing activities limited to weekdays between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you. Caitlin, who's next?
Caitlin Piazza, I'm unmuting Greg Ames.
Excuse me, folks. This is Greg Ames, I live at 273 Thimble Islands Road, and I'm here on behalf of your Branford Clean Energy Committee tonight. It's a young committee, as most of you know, and this is a sort of a first opportunity for us to share some of our thinking with the community. I have a prepared four or five-minute statement about what we think are some important issues relating to this application, and appreciate if you'll bear with me while I read it to you. Addressed to the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission from the Branford Clean Energy Committee, it reads, in the survey done for the 2019 revision of Branford's Plan of Conservation and Development, a strong majority of residents agree that Branford should do more to promote energy efficiency and renewable energy. Plan recommended that the town reduce energy use, become more energy efficient, reduce reliance on fossil fuels, and encourage increased use of renewable energy, such as solar and wind. Promote greener buildings and vehicles. wind, promote greener buildings and vehicles and provide for electric car charging stations. The Branford's Clean Energy Committee is currently drafting an energy plan that looks to guide the community to using 100% renewable energy by 2040. The combination of increasing efficiency of energy use, the installation of renewable energy generating systems. Specifically, the draft energy plan upsets the state's targets of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to 55% of 2001 emissions by 2030, 20% of the 2000 level, 2001 level by 2050 and challenges the community to exceed these targets as possible. Currently, 35 to 40% of the community's energy use is for space heating using natural gas or oil. About 20% is for electricity, some of which goes for heating and especially cooling. And about 40% is for transportation. The main strategy of the plan is to electrify the heating and transportation sectors to increase efficiency and to facilitate replacing fossil fuels with renewable electricity. The most cost-efficient time in a building's life to incorporate energy efficiency features and renewable energy systems is as the building is being designed and constructed. Same is true of installing at least the conduits for the wiring needed to install electric vehicle charging stations, which will become increasingly important as more people switch from internal combustion to battery electric vehicles. The state has committed to the goal of increasing the number of EVs registered in Connecticut from not quite 12,000 at the end of 2019 to between 125 and 150,000 by 2025. There were 131 plug-in vehicles registered in Branford at the end of 2019. The Energy Committee hopes to work with P&amp;Z Commission to encourage the incorporation of energy efficiency and renewable energy in new construction in Branford. We also encourage the applicant to consider the savings to be realized for the life of the buildings by incorporating these features and to work with the proposed building occupants to make their energy use more cost-effective and sustainable over the life of the building. We also ask the applicants to consult with the proposed users to determine their interest in eventually installing EV chargers for the use of their customers. Thank you for your consideration.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Ames. Caitlin, who's next?
Caitlin Piazza, I don't see anyone else.
Okay, we'll just open up one more time. Does any member of the public wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, Caitlin is?
I have somebody who just raised their hand. Caitlin Piazza. I'm unmuting the number ending in two nine eight seven.
Hi, my name is Nancy Mancini. I live on 43 Mill Creek Road. Harry, I sent this letter to you today. I hope it got to the members, but if not, maybe you can send it along, but I will read it now. Dear Harry and P&amp;Z members, I'm concerned that developers are getting the green light too quickly from our town's commission and in hindsight, we're left with bad practices and disregard for the land and the surroundings. For example, 250 North Main is a quarry operation and a horrible eyesore for our town. The housing development on Gould Lane, another improved site that has so many problems, including polluting important wetland property behind it. I'm afraid with the amount of rock ledge removal on this site, the same sediment issues will contaminate Swiss Street Wetland, then move downstream into the Mill Creek Wetland Preserve, an important coastal resource. I feel there is a need to take a closer look at this development. Why can't this development be downsized so there's not so much ledge that needs to be cleared? Does there really need to be a bank on this site? Is it true that this Aldi's grocery store is oversized compared to other grocery stores this company builds? I also ask that you check again to make certain proper water storm management is sufficient and if not, to make it so. I am asking that planning and zoning takes the time to consider restrictions when necessary, to downsize projects to fit our community and to think about how the development will impact the environment and the people in proximity to it. Please look to your own P O C D that was thoughtfully put together for guidance and best practices. Thank you.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Ms. Mancini. Caitlin, do we have anyone else?
Caitlin Piazza, I don't see anyone else.
Okay, then we can close the public portion of the public hearing and ask, does the applicant have any additional comments that they'd like to make in response?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, John Nuff, just very quickly, a few responses to Ms. Mancini. Her reference to things being done very quickly in the town or in other, before land use commissions, we are before the inland water commission for six months and I would tell you that the project benefited with by that scrutiny. There's a considerable amount of overlap between the jurisdiction of the wetland commission and this particular with regard to stormwater and landscaping. They eventually were pleased with our design. So, and as I said, we, that project, the project was scrutinized to an incredible degree by the third-party reviewers. The commission deliberated over multiple evenings, making sure that there was not one stone that couldn't be improved upon and eventually approved it. So certainly no one is rushed to judgment to approve applications in the town of Branford. In terms of downsizing, we have 22,000 square feet on nine acres. I challenge anyone to find a ratio, anything even close to that. Granted, there are wetlands, there is ledge, but as a practical matter, this simply would not be financially viable without both users. As I said, 3,000 square foot bank, 19,000 square foot Aldis, which is far smaller than most other grocery stores, we're told a 22,000 square feet on nine acres. It is an incredibly modest proposal, particularly in light of the fact that the immense amount of work we have to do, particularly with the environmental cleanup we have to do, I think is the absolute best project for that site, given all the challenges that it faces. As I said, I think Wayne has demonstrated the team's desire to satisfy the intent of Harry's comments of maximizing the landscaping as much as we possibly can, consistent with the site constraints, I'm with power lines, I'm with rip rap and with wetlands and with ledge. So, you know, the whole team is here to answer any other questions, but we would very much appreciate your consideration and if you felt comfortable, we would really appreciate that because both Aldi's and Chase remarkably in this environment want to get started. They want to construct and this is going to be a great project for the town.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Nuff. Just a couple of follow-up questions based on public comment. There was one, I think Ms. McCarthy asked a question about a cherry, a substitute, one type or another. I don't know, but perhaps Mr. Violet can address that.
Yes, thank you. Wayne Violet, Landscape Architect, V L Companies. The question or the comment about switching the Kwanzen cherry currently specified for around the parking areas to something native, we would certainly be open to that. There's some good suggestions, could be anything from, you know, Dogwood, Redbud, Serviceberry, you know, there's a plethora that we could choose and so if that's a condition, we'd be, we'd be fine and we would agree to make that change. That's not a concern on our end.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Violet. Mr. Nuff, just, and there was a general question about, from the Clean Energy Committee, there's nothing in our regulations that requires this. That said, is something that Aldi has ever done in terms of, I think the notion seems to be when you're building out the site, maybe you put the conduits in, now's the time to do it.
We would have no objection to adding conduit. Typically, you know, car charges are done by third parties, but adding conduit now does in fact make sense and we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments from commission members or staff? If not, then I think we can close this matter as a public hearing and after our next public hearing, we can talk about where we want to go with this. So that's what we'll do for now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, so our next continued public hearing is Eight Howd LLC. It's a special exception coastal site plan for two-family house at Eight Howd Avenue. And again, we opened the public hearing in our last, last meeting and we continue this matter and is the applicant's representative ready to proceed on this one?
Caitlin Piazza.
Mr. Preddy, you're ready to proceed?
Yes, Jim Preddy for Skolo Engineering. My understanding is that we tabled this to allow commission members to go by and view the site. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to do that. To recap, we're looking to put a two-family house on that property, very similar to the one, the other ones in the area. The footprint, I believe, we're only like 1500, 1500, 1600 square feet where if we were to do a single-family house, we'd be allowed to do almost a 5,000 square foot house. There was questions about septic, you know, the septic would be the same design whether it was a four-bedroom, single-family house or two, two-bedroom, multifamily house. It's the same, the septic design is based on number of bedrooms, so that doesn't really change. There was questions about, you know, the condition of the road and drainage on the road and I feel that we're not going to actually affect the road at all. The curb cut's not moving, the site actually drains toward the rear. So I don't feel that we're affecting the road drainage and part of that road is a private road and part of it's public road. Quite honestly, I believe that's really a matter of course. There was a comment about the lot being filled into level because of the two-family house and that's simply not the case. The lot will continue to slope in the same direction they always have. Again, you know, the, there was comments about size of the house and towering over and I submit that it's really not much bigger than a two-family house, a single-family home, in fact, smaller than what we could build here. Ironically enough, it said in the letter that the neighbor signed a half of the Stony Creek Committee is, the community is already home to several multifamily homes rentals. So I'm not sure why this one is a problem when none of the others are. So I guess unless any of the commissioners have any additional questions from their possible drive-bys, I think, you know, I think we've said everything we need to say
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Preddy. I think one of the, I think one of the members, I think it was Mr. Altimat, talked about an old, I'm looking at the minutes, an old maple tree that will die due to root damage that we caused from the installation of the septic system. Did you look at that at all? Do you know what he's talking about?
Jim Preddy again, if he's referring to the tree that's on the south side of the existing driveway, then we're not, we're not excavating on that side of the driveway at all. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. There is a tree in the middle of the yard that will definitely have to go as part of the septic, but that's on the property. I mean, if, as a homeowner, you know, if we weren't coming in with an application, he'd be allowed to cut trees down without coming to the commission. So I don't see how that really changes anything.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Preddy?
No, I believe that's it.
Okay.
Fisher has anything you'd like to add?
Is Mr. Fisher present?
I am.
Yes, do you have any comments, sir?
I don't. I think Jim addressed everything. Mr. Altimat had two questions, one about the tree to the south of the driveway and Jim just answered those questions. We're not going to be excavating there. I did meet with him and told him that if he has any concerns about that tree, I would happy to be, I would be happy to address them with him. Also, he was a little concerned about the tree on the, right on the corner of Howd Avenue, the driveway. It's right near the wires, but that tree technically is not even on my property, but I'd be happy to address cleaning that tree up if that's necessary as well.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Ms. Fisher, did you have a chance to meet with any of the other neighbors or was it?
I did not.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from commissions or comments from staff?
Just quickly, Harry Smith, Town Planner, just want to make sure the applicants have seen the proposed conditions in the memorandum from Assistant Town Planner Caitlin Piazza. Any comments to make about them?
Jim Preddy, was this the same?
The same memorandum presented at the last meeting on the 21st.
Well, I think we were fine with all of these.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chuck Anders, Chair, any other questions or comments from commission members or staff? Not then, we'll open it up to the public. Are there members of the public that wish to comment?
Sorry, Chuck, Piazza here. I just, I just wanted to remind the board that there's also a waiver requested for the landscaping, the details of which are in the staff report. Just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to look at that. It was requesting a waiver for some of the landscaping that typically required for special You know, historically, the board granted those waivers because of limited.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Caitlin. Any other comments from commission members or staff? Not then, we'll open it up to the public. Please raise your hand or do the chat or whatever the dial is. I forget what it is, if you'd like to be recognized.
Caitlin Piazza, I'm going to unmute Jake Lang and then Richard Deering.
Hello, my name's Jake Lang. I live at Four Howd Avenue, which is the house that's immediately next to Eight Howd Avenue, the proposed building. I was going over the planning and zoning rulebook and section five dash eight refers to Stony Creek in itself of Branford and says that buildings proposed in the village must conform to the village mindset and must harmoniously fit in with the existing surroundings. And right now, we're a single-family street and we understand that you could build a 5,000 square foot house, single-family. We're fine with that because it's one family. We don't want a multifamily transient thing here. The ones that Mr. Fisher already owns are all on the main thoroughfare of Leeds Island Road where traffic isn't an issue, where if you brought it into this road, it would be an issue. That being said, I do have some questions if the building is to get built. My privacy in my backyard, we get limited very significantly by this project. I was wondering if it's a possibility of a privacy fence going up to buffer our two yards or some sort of significant landscaping so I don't lose what little privacy I have now. I'd also like to know when the project's about to be, go on because I'm expecting a sun soon. I would like to know when there's going to be excavators in my backyard. I'm strongly against the two-family going up next door because I think we would keep the street integrity of a single-family and I think the two-family would end up ruining the neighborhood and could drive us towards a West Haven-type town where every single thing is a rental property and we lose the integrity of our town.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Lang. Are there members of the public wish to comment? Caitlin?
Caitlin here, Richard Deering, you're unmuted.
Well, this is a septic hearing. I have one question. The water that drains down from, in the ground from our area to the little swamp back there, how are you going to address that?
What, can you identify, Chuck Anders, Chair, can you identify where you live and what, where you're, what you're talking about?
I'm, I'm right at the top of the hill. I'm 449 Leets Island Road. And the water drains down from our area down through the ground into a swamp behind the property Nikki is talking about. And this area also floods parts of Leets, Watchers Avenue. The basements over there get flooded. I was wondering, what are you going to do about this? Are you going to make sure that this, it doesn't contribute to this?
Okay, thank you. We'll ask the applicant to address that. Any other comments or questions?
Caitlin Piazza, I'm unmuting Susan Swerzky.
Were the dealings done? I, I'm sorry, the dealings done? I couldn't tell.
Hi, I'm David Swerzky. I live on Five Howd Avenue, which is directly across the street from the building lot that we're talking about, the proposed building lot. I would strongly recommend and implore this commission not to give the waiver to have a two-family building put, put in there. It is zoned for one family, and I would plead to keep it a one-family street. Nice little quaint neighborhood, would like to keep it this way.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you. Other comments from the public?
Caitlin Piazza, I don't, I don't see anyone else.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Preddy. Want to address any of the comments, particularly, maybe you've already addressed it, but also the drainage issue, concern about the 449 Leets water draining into a swamp, whether this will contribute to that or make, affect that existing conditions in any way?
Sure, Jim Preddy, Chris Collo Engineering, as far as the immediate neighbor, I'm sure Mr. Fisher would be willing to put up a fence or some sort of hedgerow or something along that property line to, to, you know, add to the privacy and the, you know, keeping the backyard separate. I don't, I don't see that as an issue. As far as the swamp, quote-unquote, back there, you know, those folks are uphill of this property, so I'm not sure what their concern is. But we are, I mean, this property does pitch toward the back, toward the area I believe that they're talking about. The, there is, you know, some roof or impalement already there. The, we are increasing it somewhat, but we are also providing some underground stormwater storage units in the back of the garage area, so, so we could try to get that water back in the ground before it gets, you know, before, as what's required. Store an inch of the rainfall over the roof area into the yard. We're required to do that, so we are doing that. So I don't see how we're adding any to that swamp area. And the last, you know, the last comment about the single-family home being allowed, or the, that's what it's zoned for. I mean, it is zoned additionally, also for two-family homes here. We have met all the regulations, the bulk standards. We are meeting most of the, or some of the special exception landscaping requirements. Some of them don't really apply to residences, and we've asked for a waiver of those, but we are providing landscaping on, you know, 40% of the house. And one of Caitlin's comments was, we also need to provide 40% of the garage, which we are willing to add. So again, I, I think, you know, the use is permitted here. Special use is just, is a way for you guys to kind of have an extra review on these type of things. But we do meet all the other zoning regulations, all the bulk standards, area setbacks, so forth. And I would ask the commission to approve this application with, you know, with the comments in Caitlin's letter.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you, Mr. Preddy. Mr. Fisher, you have, on behalf of the applicant, you have also comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the Stony Creek Architectural Review Board looked at the plan, and they were happy with it and keeping with Stony Creek.
Thank you. Anything else from the applicant? Not then, then we'll close this matter.
I have one more hand raised in the public, if you still want to take that.
Sure.
All right, I'm unmuting 9817.
This is Dennis Kelly, I'm at Three Howd Avenue, across the street from this project. And as I understand it, we are currently zoned for single-family. The whole street is single-family. I would like you to comply with the town law, period. Just, you know, why don't, why can't I just tear down my building and put up a four-family? What the heck, let it rip! Now, it's zoned, single-family, and I see no reason that it would put up that we should put investment property, two families in here. This is only investment property. This is not somebody building their own home. This is just business. So I would, it requests the town to stick to their own laws. This is a single-family area, a single-family zoning, stick to it. Thank you.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you. Any other, are there any other comments? Caitlin, is that it?
Nope, Caitlin here, I'm, Jake Lang is also raising his hand again.
Make it quick, Jake, you've already spoken one. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask again when the proposed project was thinking about being started.
Okay, oh, the timetable, okay, sure. Yeah, you had asked that the first time. Anything else from the public? Okay, Chuck Anders, Chair, again, okay, then the applicant, there's one additional question, that if this were to be approved, it's a big if, we don't have it well, but when would you want to start? Mr. Fisher?
I think we start it when we get through this process and we get our appropriate okays. And after the time period that's allowed for the demolition, or, we've been dealing with John Herzan and his group to try to give the Quonset hut away, see if somebody wants it, it's about to be posted in their newsletter. So I'd like to get through this process, see if someone wants the Quonset hut. If they don't, then I'd like to move forward with project.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you. Anything else from the applicant? Okay, then we can.
Just a question, just a question, and maybe Caitlin can answer this. You know, somebody mentioned about stick to the zone. Multifamily homes, I believe, single-family, two-family, and I think even, I can't, I don't have the book in front of me. Some of these residential zones, three and four-family houses are allowed, correct?
Caitlin Piazza, Assistant Town Planner, yeah, as a clarification to the zoning, this is an R2 zone. It is not a single-family zone. It is just that single-family is one of the uses that is permitted by right instead of as a special exception. A special exception just meaning that the impact requires occasionally additional review on top of what would normally be required through a zoning and building permit. So, yeah, this is not by right, but by a special exception.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thank you. Caitlin, what are, what are the special section criteria and regs? I just want to review them quickly myself. What section of the regs are these? I'm going to pick them up.
Harry Smith, Town Planner, you're talking about section 98, I believe it's F.
Okay, 98, okay.
That's the list of special exception criteria. And there are 13 of them.
Okay, anything else from the applicant? Then we'll close this matter.
No, I believe that's it.
Okay, great. Then we'll close this matter as a public hearing. And maybe we can discuss this later, see what the commission is looking at. So thank you. So that, I believe, includes our public hearings for this evening. Moving down our agenda then, we have the minutes. We have minutes from 4:220 and 5:2120. We're still waiting on the 4:21 to be reviewed. So I think we're just looking for a motion on the May 21st minutes that were sent out to us. And if commission member, any member of the commission would like to make an appropriate motion for those minutes.
I guess, I guess I will, John Lust, Commissioner, I'll make that motion.
Okay, there's Chuck Anders, Chair, John Lust has made a motion to approve the minutes from our May 21st meeting, is there a second?
Joe Chadwick, second.
Chuck Anders, Chair, Joe has seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? We, we have the regular members here, so we'll just go down the list. John Lust, are you in favor of that?
John Lust, Commissioner, yes, I'm in favor of that.
Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick approves.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso approved.
And Marcy Palusi?
Marcy Palusi approves.
And Chuck Anders, I also approve, okay. Correspondence, do we have any correspondence here?
Harry Smith, Town Planner, no, we have no, no correspondence.
Okay. Okay, then, so we have that, then I guess we can bring up the two public hearing items that we have considered for this evening. The first one is the Aldis, I guess we call that, the 1151 Main Street. And I think the issue, then, I, I mean, we've heard some public comments or whatever. It seems to me that the, the sort of issues that were brought up, one was an issue of drainage, which seems to be, I mean, there was some disagreement, but at least the applicant, the town engineer, and it looks like that, those have been addressed. There was an issue of, I brought up the issue of traffic, but again, I think that's a little bit beyond what we do here, because it's on a state road and it's a site plan. And then there was the issue of landscaping, where there are lots of details of back and forth. And then I guess the hours of operation too, for the rock crushing, that was an issue. And then there were detailed plans. So I don't know, I guess the first, first sort of question among commission members, do we, are we looking, I mean, there's two questions. One is, how are we looking to vote? And the second question is, are we looking to vote tonight or a later night? And let's start with the first one first, because I want to defer to Harry on the second one a little bit. So where, where, we'll just maybe go down the list. I think we're looking at probably the five regular members here. Are we looking, John, what, what do you think?
John Lust, Commissioner, my two concerns that I've had with this are the one that you addressed, the traffic and how the traffic signals are going to coordinate and be timed. And, and the traffic queuing and like that, those issues. And I think we have an answer on that, we're going to have to wait for the state. And my second concern was really the gateway issue that we have here. And given the easements and everything, I understand, you know, how we've come to the landscaping plan that we have, I just wonder if there's something else that we can do there. And I liked some of the items that Harry addressed, but, and Harry may know best on this, but I was wondering, you think there's any way to put something like a low granite landscape wall, maybe along the sidewalk or further back within that 85-foot setback area? Or is that just strictly something that's illegal and not possible?
Again, unfortunately, the public here is closed, Harry Smith, Town Planner. I mean, I've certainly seen that kind of treatment. There is a little bit more room to work with now that they've widened that strip. I think it was stated to be about 12 feet. We could try to tweak something into a condition that sort of left it to the discretion of staff, I guess. I would certainly.
Yeah, I would, I would be fine with.
From the commission, particularly Marcy, as the landscape architect, but I think there's a little bit more they could do there. It's hard, I understand the constraints they're talking about, so I'll just stop there, I guess, but I understand what you're saying.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I chime in on the wall part of that? The, the issue with the wall is, you know, when you're on a state traffic, by the way, you've got distances that you've got to maintain just from clearances and, you know, not having something that a park can, then can crash into and so forth. So there's, I'm sure there's a lot of guidelines that the State Traffic Commission's going to have, you know, I think.
Sure of that too. And I would be, I'm thinking of something aesthetic, something low.
Well, I think, you know, I think to have the hedge is a good start. I think, I, I really do agree with them about the quonset and cherries. It's a beautiful tree. It's a, you know, that's not a location where I particularly need to see a native tree. And I think those will have a great impact as far as creating a, you know, an entryway. And, you know, I don't think that the whole area has to be planted. I mean, just having as much green space that's opening up there is a really great start. And because the density of the development for the parcel is as small as it is, I think there's going to be a lot more green there than we're, you know, than we've seen in some regards. You know, there's still going to be a good amount of undeveloped area for this project. So I, I think it's fine as far as the gateway. I don't, I don't think we can hold this developer accountable for the entire gateway concept for the town of Brantford. I think that's got to be a concerted, you know, separate planning effort that happens. And there's certainly still space in that, you know, right-of-way to incorporate something later if the town, you know, is able to put together a gateway concept planning for all the interchanges.
Right, you know, and I, I share, you know, your thoughts about holding these people responsible for that. I'm not thinking of anything extensive.
Right.
Again, it's just aesthetics and it's permanent. Another thing I'd like to see, given the amount of planting and everything here, I think I'd like to see a maintenance plan, so we know how this is going to be maintained over the years, because it is going to be permanent. Other than that, Chuck, I, you know, I don't have a problem with, you know, with, with the project itself, and I don't have a problem voting on it tonight if that's what's decided upon.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thanks, thanks, John. Joe Vayuso, Joe, thoughts?
Yeah, Joe Vayuso, yeah, I agree with John with the aesthetics and, I'm happy to see that people that are involved in this project went to the, went to the extra mile to talk to the condo people and to cooperate with them. And, and they, I think landscaping seems to be far and above greater than what we see in many other projects this size. So I think they're, they're going the extra mile with that, and they're cooperating in any way. They'll, and they'll, they're, they also stated that they'll, you know, do more if we, we so deem want, want them to, too. So I think they're, they're doing a good job, and they, they went the extra mile to try to make this a, a good project. And they were trying to cooperate everybody around them, so. And I'm happy with what, what I see. So I'm, I'm for this, what I, you know, so far. Thank you.
Chuck Anders, Chair, thanks, thanks, Joe. Joe Chadwick?
I am generally in support of it. I'm a little litchy about the traffic coming from Main Street as it makes the turn onto East Main to the connector. I'm, I'm sure that's all going to get resolved at some point. Yes, they've done an awful lot of work on it. And I, I, I'm sort of, I, I, the hang-up on the gateway, I understand the metaphor, but it's a shopping center at the end of an exit ramp. And I'd like to stretch the concept a little bit, but I, I'm, I'm without means to do that right now. I'm just happy that the electric poultry can stay there and the osprey nest will probably remain undisturbed.
Chuck Anders chair, thanks, Joe. Uh, Marcy?
Um, I've, you know, I've kind of interrupted my comments with John about the gateway. Um, I think, you know, I think the trees that they've selected there are great. I like the addition of the, you know, screening the, the parking with the low hedge to block some of the parking in there. And as long as they keep sort of as much space, you know, I think you're gonna have a nice corridor in there. I think that state traffic is gonna deal with, you know, the lanes and the timing as best they can for the situation that it's at. And I think that's a, you know, a subject that's not, you know, solely impacted by just this project, but all of Commercial Avenue and the, you know, the need for a southbound exit at fifty-three and so forth. So I, I see it as a much larger issue that has been worked on for quite some time and will continue to be worked on and improved over time. Um, but, you know, as far as this project and its overall density for the amount of area on the land and, you know, you know, I feel like they've done quite a bit to protect the wetlands and to be, you know, environmentally conscious with native species and the buffers and, and whatnot. And, you know, I think that's evident by the response by Rockledge in their favor of the project. So, uh, you know, I've just heard good things about the company and the plan pretty good, you know, pretty tight and well thought out to me, so I'm in favor of it.
Uh, Chuck Anders chair, thanks, Marcy. Okay, so the consensus is approval. And, and so the next question is, and, and now I want to turn to Harry because, Harry, I know you put this together. I don't know if you feel comfortable with this, if you'd like more time. There was a, there were a variety of details and they also, you know, I, I, I would like to add, you know, adding the conduit, because they agreed to do that, and I think that's fit, it shows good faith, but, you know, so they could do that for the electrical, uh, for the EV conduits. And then, um, the hours of operation, I think the, they said, uh, the attorney for the, for the condo said, uh, it was weekdays nine to five, so we put that in there. But I just don't know if you feel comfortable, we're ready to do it because if, you know, it's a significant project. And then we're talking just, you know, it's two weeks. I understand that the applicant is, you know, itching to go forward. Uh, if nothing else, if we feel we need more time, I think they, you know, the attorney can represent that the commission is, you know, based on the discussion, is inclined for an approval, if you can tell them that. But we, uh, if, if you feel you, you're, you, you're comfortable with the resolution or not, that, that's sort of where I'm at.
Okay. Um, Harry Smith Town Planner, I'm gonna share my screen and go through what I've drafted. Um, as we've been talking here, I've done some wordsmithing and I can throw that out as I go through it and see if that, um, I think I'm comfortable enough, um, with the wordsmithing changes I made. Some of it could be, you know, more finely tuned and, uh, it sort of puts the commission in leaving some of these things to, uh, to my discretion. And I'll just propose that and see what you think about all that. So I'm gonna share my screen here. So you should be seeing, um, staff recommendation should be in the middle of it. If I picked the right, nope, picked the wrong one. So let's try this one. Okay, so you should be seeing something that has a couple of bullet points at the top, should say page two of seven, and staff recommendation in the middle of the, uh, the window. Is that what everyone could see?
Yeah.
All right, so to start off with, I've got two findings. Um, one is a standard finding about compliance with the conditions for construction. Uh, and the second is a standard finding about coastal site plan being consistent with those policies Coastal Management Area Act. Um, this is, uh, pretty far away from the shoreline with the exception of, um, Mill Creek. It's real called Mill Creek, um, that drains out down across, under Harbor, um, and into the Branford River. Um, but I think there's been quite a bit of attention, as was mentioned during the hearing, to, um, um, stone water runoff and soil erosion during construction. So standard conditions here, um, all construction of all blocks and substantially follow the most recent submitted revisions approved plans. Has it be modified to conform with other requirements of the approval? Um, been requiring complete sets of plans just to make it easy to review them. Make sure they're signed, um, prior to start of construction activity. This actual approval pretty closely mirrors that one, which was done for, uh, East Main Street and Sycamore Way for the laboratory office building at the last meeting. Let's see, Marcy? So require, um, additional sheet, uh, to show construction layout, stockpiling materials and so forth. Uh, pre-construction meeting, um, installation of construction fencing along the limited disturbance. I hope I have the right sheet reference here. Um, installation of seven station erosion controls and a soil erosion control financial guarantee or bond. Um, four would deal with, um, the fact that, um, we would need information on the building mounted lights and some of the typical limitations, um, on the color temperature of the lights to make them, uh, warmer and less blue-white. We've been, uh, based on input we got from the AMA. Um, and then you comply with full cutoff criteria and they get all of the information that's required. I'm not sure all that's been submitted, particularly with the building mounted lights. So, uh, condition requiring, um, certain submissions prior to issuance of a blasting permit. Again, this is pretty identical to what was proposed for, um, the Sycamore Way application. Uh, require pre-blast survey within two hundred and fifty feet again in the area of the blasting instead of the property boundary. Uh, submit all of additional information on blasting, amount and locations required in the regs. And of course, compliance with any blasting permit and limiting the hours Monday to Friday. And here it's nine to three. Um, that was just what was done at Sycamore Way. Um, it could be five since that was the agreement for the rock crushing, uh, so I'll just leave that. I don't know if the commission has any preference on that? Since we're on the topic, might as well ask and let me know. You want to let me go to five, we can change it.
Um, Chuck Anders chair, did they agree with, with three? If they're okay with three, I'd say leave it.
I don't think, I think they did. They, they did see these, um, I, they only got them when I finished them yesterday afternoon, but they did say they were okay, so I think.
Okay. We're finally, we're finally.
Um, again, here, I'm gonna suggest some changes to six since, uh, it seemed if the commission wants to approve the rock crusher right here, we could change the wording, um, to read in the three, the third line after a site closed parentheses could say shall meet and then cross everything out to the word section shall meet section six point eight G requirements. And be limited to nine to five P M. Monday through Friday. So that would be a way to do that. Um, moving down to, um, again, a condition that topsoil be stockpiled, uh, excess type, topsoil not removed without approval of the commission. That's in the regulations. Um, one year life with a special exception approval under six eight, which is again in the regulations. Uh, foundation as built for the two buildings, a number nine. Uh, number ten would contain a number of changes that would be needed to the plans.
Uh, can you screen it down though? You, you, the screen is, now I see the top there. Here we go, thanks.
As built, so now we're on number ten. Um, so they would need to, um, any required evidence to document client's conditions three, four, and five. I'll just go back. Those are, um, requirements before any clearing, tree removal. So this is three. So these are the subsections of three, which I just talked about. All those would need to be doubly checked to make sure they've been complied with. Four is the lights. And five is, um, all requirements before the blasting permit. So those would all need to be done before the issuance of a zoning permit in case things are out of sequence. So they've got the building permit for the blasting. Um, so again, talked about three and five and A and B. Um, this could be erased. C is redundant because that there are no requests to changes, so you'd want to eliminate that.
Delete D?
Delete C.
C, okay.
And then modification of landscaping plan. I think, uh, they agreed to this. I remember the presentation, Mr. Violet, about the fifty-foot buffer around the drip line. Um, he, uh, again, I think the retaining wall, I could not see if in all sections it is three feet and less. Uh, but if it's over three feet, it needs to be designed by a P E. Um, and meet this, I don't think there's a separation issue here and additional landscape requirements that we talked about, which they've already agreed to. So we're going down here to F. Dumpster enclosure, I talked about something different than chain link and slats. Um, usually typical, it's like a vinyl fence or something. Uh, note of the site plan about contractor responsible grading that's required by the section six eight of zoning regulations. Um, again, H is also required by the regulations spelling out, you need to get, uh, suitable soil to the depth of four inches. Um, I, um, would require, um, again, we already talked about the plantings of the retaining walls and, uh, plans and measures by a licensed obiterist to demonstrate client's requirements and preservation of significant trees, which could simply be what they proposed. Um, J, uh, require uh, placement of erosion control mats as may be directed by the zoning officer. Um, if it's not seasonally appropriate to conduct the final topsoil placement, there's already requirements for the use of, um, erosion control mats. This would just add to those requirements to provide some, uh, additional direction at the, uh, request of, uh, the Z O. Uh, okay. I'm gonna propose some changes too to reflect some of the discussion and the comments by the applicant's landscape architect. So I think I'd like to propose keeping eye but modifying it to re-provide street trees in parentheses canopy trees every fifty feet along the developed furniture of the property as required by section six three of the zoning regulations as possible, given the constraints of utility easements and overhead power lines. So there's a way to fit another tree in there. Then, you know, I could cooperatively work the applicant to do that. Uh, I understand they've, you know, done quite a extensive effort in landscaping, but, you know, I think a little bit more can't hurt and I think it would benefit. Um, so I'll just throw that out there and, you know, commit, you can decide you would like to remove that. That's certainly your choice. Um, so we have, uh, Roman numeral two, um, will be revisions to the front yard landscaping, uh, strong gateways again. I think the hedge continuation along, uh, the bank frontage is probably sufficient. Um, given the constraints of the narrowness and what I hear to be the, uh, consensus of the commission. Um, and further changes address the comments raised by the consulting planner. Uh, again, I would, um, probably, um, limit what I would look for to, uh, what was discussed tonight in terms of the additional plantings along the, uh, northwest corner. Um, if we could work something out cooperatively with the applicant about anything that could be added to the frontage. Um, and I certainly don't think, uh, plantings along the rear and the side of the Aldis building really would be much of a benefit. Um, I might, I will propose a Roman numeral four, which I think was based on the comment from, I think it was Shirley McCarthy in the agreement of, uh, the applicant's landscape architect about the quans of cherries. I mean, I understand, uh, at least Marcy thinks that's fine. So if you guys all think it's fine, uh, you can not use this, but uh, Roman numeral four could be changed the quans of cherry to a native species, which I understand the applicant did agree to do if the commission wants them to. Um, so moving along to L would be again, two full sets of plans, um, could address all the conditions. And number eleven be requirements before a, a C O or certificate of zoning compliance, completing all the site work or bond. Uh, documentation that a post-blast survey was offered, and this is probably in the agreement with the condo association. Um, and documentation about the, uh, I guess, post-blast survey, I guess. Um, and then something that's required by section six eight of the regs, which is certifying the stability of the rock slope. This needs to be done by, I think, a professional engineer. A spell of final as built, uh, financial guarantee to ensure survival of plant materials. Um, which I think, uh, I think John Lust mentioned looking for something like that. Uh, number twelve is a standard condition about no new signage or lighting without commission approval or staff, whichever is appropriate. Number thirteen, now the standard condition about dust, so the Z O can request dust control be implemented if necessary. Uh, number fourteen, the standard condition about that landscaping must be maintained as an ongoing requirement of the approval. Um, replaced if needed. And number fifteen, any modifications to the site would require further approval either by the mission or staff as appropriate. And I'd also said, well, we got another sixteen here. Um, I just want to specifically point out, I don't know if there are any inconsistencies between the existing plans and any changes that might be required by the inland wetlands and water courses agency approval, but just wanted to point out that if they're minor, I would go ahead and approve those. If they're major, we'd certainly come back to the commission. And number sixteen, um, we put this on a couple of approvals recently, which is the applicant provide monthly progress reports. Um, I believe there is a, a requirement for reports also as part of the inland wetlands approval and the mitigation work proposed. This would augment that, but it could be, um, waived if, um, it was determined to not be necessary. Finally, I'd also propose a condition seventeen, which would read the hours of our construction shall be limited to nine A M. to five P M. Monday through Friday.
Okay, um, Harry, a couple of things. I think John mentioned something about a maintenance plan for the landscaping. Do we have that in there anywhere?
I don't, but I think that's covered by our standard condition and the bond. Um, so we've got a financial guarantee, ensure survival of plant materials. Um, and then we've got this condition that we have used the number approvals about, um, all landscaping must be maintained as an ongoing requirement of approval. Uh, but I think that's covered. I mean, I'll, if, if there's anything else you can, John, that you think we could add, um, let me know.
Uh, John Lust, Commissioner, I'm just reading through it now. And I, I guess, I guess that would be all right. I guess, I guess what we have here is conditions would, uh, would give us some oversight on that. So I, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Chuck Anders chair, uh, here we go, uh, conduits.
Um, you know, there's nothing in the regulations to require that. I mean, I could take them at their word. We can, since they agreed to it, we can put something in if you like.
Yeah, the applicant agreed to do it.
Okay. So we're gonna add a number eighteen, uh, conduits for the about conduits for the possible future installation of E V charging stations shall be installed as appropriate. I don't know how many.
That's.
It's a little vague, but.
That's fine.
Okay.
Clean air, energy people have any suggestions they can give me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then. It sounds like, um, is, does, do commission members, uh, have any questions about that? There were, looks like there were changes. We, we sent out the draft resolution. There are changes to number six, a deletion in ten uh, C. There was changes to the landscaping condition in ten K. And some additions, uh, I think at, at, at the end, uh, the hours and the conduits.
Right.
So if that sounds okay, does someone want to make a motion to approve the, uh, application in accordance with the staff recommendation, the findings and conditions in Harry's memo dated June three, twenty twenty, as re- as including, as revised, uh, just now?
Joe Chadwick will move to accept.
Joe Chadwick will move to accept amendments as changed, giving Harry further latitude to make editorial adjustments as he sees necessary.
Oh my god. I don't know if I want that power to.
Yeah, no, I, I think we gotta know what we're voting on, so I think
Right, right, we do.
The changes were, so. So yeah, that's, that's a motion to approve with the changes, which do give Harry some discretion.
Some limits.
Changes himself, right?
Editorial latitude. Not substantive latitude.
So there's a motion made by Joe, is there a second?
Joe Vauso approves, our seconds.
Okay, uh, a second, Chuck Anderson shares a second by Joe. Any further discussion? All of them in favor, we'll go through the list, uh, John Lust?
Uh, Commissioner John Lust here, approve.
Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick approves.
Joe Vauso?
Joe Vauso approved.
Marcy?
Marcy Bluzey approves.
And Chuck Anderson also approved, okay. So that takes care of item number one. Item number two, eight Howd Avenue. I guess we can discuss this. The issue, I think the main issue is, is is, uh, having a, a two-family in a, in a neighborhood that is largely single-family when neighbors uh, don't want it, even though the size of the house may be compatible with the size of houses that are there. I mean, that, that's kind of the issue, uh, and it's as a special permit, and you look in the special permit criteria, which are nine eight F, I'm looking at numbers two and three, which, uh, authorizes to look at the character of the neighborhood in harmony with the neighborhood. It's sort of a discretionary type of thing, so that if we, we can consider that if we'd like. So it's, it's more, it's not an as a right use, it's a use that we can approve, uh, it must, you know, uh, blah, 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 it must be, it shall be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is located and will promote the welfare of the town. Design elements of the proposed development must be attractive and suitable in relation to the site characteristics, the style of other buildings in the immediate area, and existing improbable character of the neighborhood in which the use is located. So I mean, they, we, we can consider that stuff in a special exception, we can look at the character of the neighborhood and those sorts of things. So. And the main, I, I thought the main arguments in favor was that this is, we could put a lot larger single-family. This is kind of looks similar to a single-family, I guess, even though it's, it's not. And, uh, so it's, it's size-wise, it's compatible with the houses in the neighborhood. I did drive in the neighborhood. There are house, there are small houses, there are larger houses. Um, and, and so, and, and there was, seemed to be opposition from a lot of the neighbors who'd said, you know, we want it to be a single family. So then, I mean, those, those are kind of, that's where we are. What do other people think? We go down the list, will that help? I'll haul on you. Uh, John, you're on the top of my list tonight, so would I?
Uh, John Lust, Commissioner, um, yes, thanks Chuck. Yes, I did drive through the neighborhood and I spent a lot of time in Stony Creek. I, I, I don't find what's proposed inconsistent with the neighborhood. And, uh, I, I, I just, I think it fits well on the lot, and I don't think it's going to negatively impact the lot. I think, I think he's handled the drainage issues uh, that might have come up. I like that he's, uh, that he's, that he's handling and, uh, reintroducing the, you know, the runoff from the roof and back down into the groundwater. I just, um, you know, I'm sympathetic with the neighborhood, but I, I, I just don't see this as being out of character. I, I mean, I don't know how we could deny it for something, something like that. Um, it's not an apartment complex. It's not a multi-story, you know, three or four-story building, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a residential house on a residential property in a residential neighborhood, and instead of a single-family, it'll be two-family, but I, I just, you know, I'm sympathetic to the neighborhood, but I don't see that as a reason to not approve this.
Chuck Anderson, thanks, Joe. Joe Chadwick?
Okay, I've got, I, I've had a lot of difficulty with this personally because the, the applicant obviously has a very good track record. And my heart exploded when he, I found out he was trying to find a way to give away the Quonza hut. I, I am a fan of Quonza huts, and that's, it's a tremendously contextual building in that neighborhood. I have never seen such a uniform neighborhood opposition, and these people have to live with it. And honestly, I, I don't know how the Stony Creek Architectural Commission said this was an okay building. I think given the context of the neighborhood, the shape and the form of the building, the frontality of it, uh, the roof proportions is, is kind of contrary to everything that I, I see up and down the street. I mean, even the most sort of like, oh, oh, McMansion farther down, uh, down the street at least made some effort to have a flatter slope, lower eaves, a multiplicity of things going on with dormers, so it's sort of minimized the height of it. The, the, the frontality of this and the, um, sort of blockiness on the site just is, is, is more appropriate someplace else as, as a building form, and that, again, is just my opinion. I am, I am standing a, a lot harder on the resistance of the neighborhood because I, I can't imagine this going through and having a really positive outcome with respect to the neighborhood.
Chuck Anderson, thanks, Joe. Joe Vauso?
Yeah, Joe Vauso. Boy, um, uh, this was a hard one for me. I, I really feel for the people, that they all were in unity about the, of being a single-family neighborhood, but, uh, the other side of the coin, he's proposing a two-family house, but with only two bedrooms. If it was a three-bedroom, two, three-bedroom units, then I'd be apt to say, I would not be in favor of that, but two, two-bedroom, that means the families that are going to be living there are not going to be large families, at best might be, uh, someone with, with one or two children, at best, one most more likely. It's not going to be a situation where there'll be changing the neighborhood that much greater, but at the same time, people that are living there, all, all, all came out with the same concern, but it's a one-family house, but at the, but then it's zoned for that as well, or two-family or three-family houses. I'm really not, I don't know what, what this, this is a hard one for me. But probably going to sidewood with an approval, because what he's proposing is maximum of two-bedroom, two, two-bedroom units. And I don't know if there's something we can put in there that that's the maximum, if that's something we can do, that it can't, no more than two bedrooms each unit. I, I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to everybody, everybody else's opinion, see if I can come up with more determinative, uh, decisions. I'm, right now, I'm still on the fence, sorry.
Chuck Anderson, thanks, Joe. Marcy?
Um, I'm listening very carefully to everyone else's comments as well and to the public. Um, you know, I, I know some of the other two families that are in Stony Creek, and, you know, I find the architecture attractive, you know, whether it's appropriate for this street is, you know, I think really at the heart of the question. Um, you know, it's, it's a single-family street and we're introducing the two-family and most likely a rental two-family. And, you know, whether there's natural bias to that, you know, I'm not sure our zoning regulations really addressed that or restrict that, so, you know, if, if that's the bias for wanting the, the projects from the neighborhood, you know, I don't feel that we're in a position to address that. As far as the bulk size of the structure, you know, I think it's, it's appropriate for the street, it won't necessarily attract more traffic. You know, I understand there's a lot of pressures in Stony Creek in general, you know, to, you know, minimize developments, you know, there's a lot of desire to be down there, it's a very beautiful, wonderful area, so you know, I, I'm just not sure I'm finding any reason to, to not approve it particularly, I, you know, I think that it's a great street and whoever lives there is, you know, going to want to live there and you know, hopefully the neighbors would welcome them and, and, you know, I'm confident Nick would put in, you know, very viable tenants with, you know, that it would be good neighbors, so, um, I guess I'd have to say I'm inclined to approve it because I can't find any reason necessarily to deny it. Um, you know, it's a shame to lose a big tree, but you know, that's I guess progress sometimes. I mean, I, I hope that he can replace some trees that he plants and, you know, and I trust that, um, you know, the, the, the stormwater calculations are correct, so I, I don't see impacts necessarily from this happening, so.
Uh, thanks, Marcy. I, I, I'm with Joe Vauso. I, I, um, this, this is a discretionary special permit, it just, it has a right, it's redundant two years ago, it wasn't approved as a right. But we, 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 based on the, the McDonald's neighborhood, remember we said, you know, people are coming in building two families, and so we just decided to make two, you know, two families in our two districts a special permit. I live in our two districts, and it's predominantly single families, and if someone could say, hey, I'm going to tear down my neighbors and put up a two-family, would it, would I be opposed to that? I might be. I mean, so I empathize with that, and I think that is something we can look at. Because of, you know, looking at the probable or future characteristics of the neighborhood, our regulations say we can do that. And that's, that's a sort of a nebulous thing. And, and maybe it's, it's ill-founded, I don't know, it could be. On the other hand, I, but I agree with everything, I think they could build a larger, a lot larger single-family house. The design itself was fucking was, was good. And I'm, I'm a little bit surprised the guy didn't lobby that. You know, um, I thought he would, so I continue to hear him guys. Uh, um, and, and, and maybe the answer is because we wouldn't run into the district law, so, so I'm, I'm a bit on the fence, but I could see people, each commission member acting in good faith to, to vote for or against these applications. I, I could see that, so. So I don't know where we stand now, so, uh, because, uh, we're pretty close. I, I counted, uh, one definite no and two definite yeses, and then, uh, I would say, I, I make the ruling no, and then Joe on the she'll be, but maybe yes. In which case it's a three-two available. Uh, so, so I, I don't, uh, I, 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 you know, we, I, I don't know if someone wants to make a motion, we could decide it, or we could, uh, uh, if we do, I mean, it seems to me if there's, there's a motion to approve, um, it should include the fence, right, uh, or you know, what you think is going to do.
Yeah, um, Harry Smith, town planner, Chuck, could maybe suggest, um, with respect to that? Um, I jotted some words down for a condition two H, which would be add a landscaped in or fence buffer with the adjacent number four Howd Avenue property.
So do we have, uh, Caitlin had, she did her memo, right?
Yes.
Wait, do we need more time on this, or should we take a vote?
Caitlin Piazza, assistant town planner, um, I can pull up the conditions that I wrote up, but it kind of sounds like maybe you want to take a little bit more time to think about, you know, if there's a condition you could add in there to mitigate some of the concerns. Um, you know, at this point, I think the architecture is that, but maybe some landscaping might soften the blow for the streetscape and for the neighbors. And that's, that's just a suggestion, and yeah, I had a note to jot down to at least add a fence or landscaping buffer for, for Howd and maybe also for the southern side, whatever number that is.
Well, that, that's a question, I, I don't know, does, do people think, are there additional conditions? Maybe you should pull it up, Caitlin.
Okay. All right, we have like, apparently a lot. Can, uh, Caitlin here, can everybody see? Screen?
Yes.
Did I go through and read them out loud, or does everybody want to read them themselves?
Read them out loud.
Okay. Um, so there's just a few boilerplate ones, um, the first being that prior to the start of construction, erosion control measures are put into place um, to the satisfaction of the Z E O. Um, and then number two, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit or authorization, um, that the applicant provide landscaping details, um, or information that a satisfactory amount of existing vegetation will be retained per section six point three on a revised site plan to fully address the landscaping requirements, not waived by the commission. Um, and maybe we just want to go over what they requested a waiver for, so you know exactly what you're looking at. So special exception, um, in a residential area, the landscaping, there's some additional, including, um, section six point three F two that requires a twenty-foot wide, uh, landscaping, uh, strip that they were requested a waiver for, as well as a ten-foot wide sided rear landscaping strip. Um, the side might be a little tricky because there's only a ten-foot um, side yard setback, which they're just about on the line of, um, on that four Howd Avenue side, which is the northern side of the property. So just scrolling back down to the condition, um, kind of deciding on that, um, they also need to give me the retaining wall dimensions, um, to determine the adequacy of the parking and side yard setbacks. And we need some landscaping for that retaining wall, which also might need to be moved away from the parking a little bit, um, depending on the height of it. Uh, we're also, uh, proposing that soil, um, erosion control uh, measures be put into place. Um, and stormwater, uh, drainage improvements be approved by the town engineer demonstrate that they're not increasing runoff. And then, uh, Stony Creek, they reviewed this as a positive recommendation, just with the, um, suggestion that any proposed lighting, um, be reviewed by the zoning, um, enforcement officer to make sure it's in conformance with the zoning regulations, uh, number three is mildly redundant, but just requires that if, and if there's any additional lighting, um, that they have to come back and get approval from the Z E O. And then I think we were going to add, um, a two H to require a, a fence or some landscaping, which I think Nick Fisher, um, agreed to in the meeting.
Uh, Chuck, okay, uh, Chuck Anderson, thanks Caitlin, so that's the, the recommended, uh, conditions, if someone wanted to make a motion to approve with those conditions, but are there other conditions anyone else thought should be added? Okay. Okay, so then what we can do then is someone, you know, we should, you should always make a motion to approve before a motion to deny. It's the proper way to go. And, um, so if someone wants to make a motion to approve the application in accordance with the, uh, staff report there by Caitlin with the additional condition that's in that.
I'll make a motion to approve for the conditions in the staff report. Marcy Paluzzi.
Okay, motion made by Marcy is your second. No one wants to second the motion?
John Luss, Commissioner, I'll make that motion, Chuck.
Okay, uh, John's second. Okay, discussion. Now we can discuss it further if we would like.
Uh, Harry Smith Town Planner, just technical point, um, is Marcy's motion to approve as amended?
Yes.
Yes. And and John's second.
Thank you.
Yes, my second is as amended.
Thank you.
Does it, does anyone have any further, you know, any thoughts we haven't had? I I've, I I I think it's, uh, it's it's a real judgment call here because we're dealing with a special, special permit criteria. One of the characteristics is the probable future character of the neighborhood. And, you know, in light of the very prevalent opposition, I I think I I would be inclined to vote against it. I understand the reason why people wouldn't. Uh, and and I also know that what the alternative is, a guy can build a big single family house as a right and, uh, neighbors can't comply. They wouldn't even have to come to us. So, uh, but, you know, I'm I'm listening, I I, well, so anyway, that's where I'm coming from. Anyone else want to discuss?
Can I ask, what's the the square footage of the total house? Is it fifteen hundred total or fifteen hundred each apartment?
Each, I would imagine.
I think it's fifteen hundred each, Joe. John Luss, Commissioner.
Three thousand total. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Then, uh, we'll vote on the motion. Uh, John Luss?
Uh, John Luss, Commissioner, I would vote to approve.
Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick declines.
Uh, Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso declined.
Uh, Marcy Paluzzi?
Marcy Paluzzi approves.
Chuck Andrews, I oppose. Uh, so, uh, the motion to approve fails. That doesn't mean it's denied necessarily unless we do nothing else. Um, because theoretically you could add another condition, a different motion. So, um, I'll 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 make a motion to deny the application on the grounds that it's, um, fails to comply with the special permit criteria based on the on the public testimony that it's inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood as evidenced by the testimony of the, uh, many residents of the neighborhood. Uh, so I made a motion, someone want to second that?
Second.
Go second.
Second by Joe. Um, further discussion? Okay, all in favor. John Luss?
Um, John Luss, Commissioner, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, opposed. Joe Chadwick?
In the affirmative.
Joe Vayuso?
Joe Vayuso approved.
Uh, Marcy?
Marcy Paluzzi, uh, decline.
Uh, and Chuck, I, uh, approve. Okay, so the application's denied. Okay, that brings us then to new business, to old business, which is in the first item old business is one sixty five, one ninety five Main Street, Kevin Curry, applicant and owner, one sixty five, one ninety five Main Street, special exception, community store, including request to waive parking requirement. In this matter, I refuse myself and I believe John is, uh, gonna act as chair for this matter. Is that correct, John?
That's correct. Um, John Luss, Commissioner and Acting Chair on this particular hearing. Uh, we might as well proceed and, uh, cover some ground tonight. We, uh, we closed the public portion of this hearing last meeting. I'd like to, uh, uh, debate it tonight, discuss it and talk about, I'd like to vote tonight if that's at all possible. This, uh, this application was received in November and I think, uh, I think it's time that we we move this along. Uh, so with that, uh, I'd like to open up to the commission members, see, uh, what the comments are. And, uh, if anybody wants to offer, otherwise I'll start with, uh, well, can we back up a little bit and and just cover who's going to be voting on this and part of this discussion? So, uh, I know Chuck that you've recused yourself. Uh, Joe Chadwick, are you recused on this as well?
Uh, Joe Chadwick is voting, it's Joe Vayuso who's recused.
Joe, I'm sorry. Okay, Joe Vayuso is recused. Okay. Uh, well, Joe Chadwick, let's start with you. What is your, what is your comment? What is your thought? Harry, you have a question?
Yeah, Harry Smith Town Planner, I just, um, before we get going, I know, uh, Paul has stated on the record that he reviewed, um, all the previous testimony and exhibits. He said that on the twenty first. And I believe, uh, Fred Russo, um, has listened to the, um, uh, recording and all testimony presented at the reopen public hearing on the twenty first, but just if you want to state that for the record, Fred?
Can you hear me?
Fred? Yes.
Yeah, I I did listen. Uh, I I actually reviewed the, uh, Bradford, uh, B C T V, uh, video of the entire meeting, actually.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, so, uh, let's continue then. We know who's gonna be voting. Uh, let's let's go through the commission members then and we'll start with Joe Chadwick. Joe, what is, what is, what's your thought on this?
Joe Chadwick speaking. Um, I I really have not changed my opinion, um, since the last time I spoke on this. Um, as far as I'm concerned, the issue of how many convenience stores there are in town is irrelevant to the subject of the of of the, uh, of matter before us. Um, it's part of a business plan, we are not judging a business plan. Um, the issue that there is too much congestion is an enforcement issue. Does not really fall into anything we can do anything about. With respect to the parking requirements and modification for parking requirements, um, I I believe this satisfies condition one that such modifications are being proposed for sites that historically have accommodated such uses if not comply with current standards and that such historically used patterns have not created any unreasonable risk to public health or safety. Um, I I don't see a material difference between this use and the current use, except for perhaps, uh, more gas traffic. And the notion that I've heard expressed that a convenience store is a destination event, I I I find really difficult to cogitate. Um, there there is an attendant for the gas pumps. And it's it's a functional thing. And to help pay for the body that has to sit and accept cash payments for gas, they sell coffee. So it's, this is not like a, um, a traffic draw to the same extent that Shelley's is, which is the presenting reason why, um, the opposition has been been has strident from a few members of the neighborhood. That being said, I am still greatly distressed that the applicant has not made any effort to, um, reach out to Shelley's and begin to calm the agitation in the neighborhood. Because clearly in the previous app, of the previous session, we had the neighbors just agitated. But looking strictly at the facts of the case, um, no reason to punish this applicant because of bad behavior of a pre, um, preexisting applicant or preexisting use. Were that the case, we wouldn't be able to do anything because nothing could move forward because everyone else has occupied all the space.
Same. Okay, thank you, Joe. Thank you for that. Let me see, let's go to, uh, Fred Russo. Fred, do you have a comment on this? He reviewed it?
Yes, I do, Fred Russo. Um, my, uh, my concern is that, um, and I made this point, um, the first time I spoke on it, was that, uh, we have, um, a tenant who's been there a long, long time, uh, and we also have a person who owns the building, separate from the tenant, who wants to put a store in. And, you know, I I listened to the neighbors, I think they have something very valuable to say. And I, if it was the, if the applicant was coming in and saying, the garage is closed and I'm gonna put a convenience store, I don't have a problem with that. Gas pumps and convenience store, I I agree with Joe in that respect, that's a business plan thing. But this is really more than just a business plan. And if the garage, we're gonna stay, I don't have a problem with that either, as a matter of fact, with the gas pumps. But trying to get two things out of one, when it it's, we all know how tight it is down there, the neighbors have expressed how tight it is down there. And I do believe that there'll be much more action with with pumps that are not manned than there'll be, you know, just owing credit cards. And and I, you know, I'm torn in one way that I feel very bad about the tenant who who's been there a long, long time, but the person who could resolve that problem is the owner of the property. He could just say, look, I'm not gonna put my store in here until you're out of here, three years from now, four years from now, and that happens. That's not what's being asked for. What really is being asked for is that we put the store now and leave the guy there and then the then the building has two different businesses in it. So I I would be inclined, you know, it would have to be one or the other, but not both.
I see. All right. Thank you very much, John Luss, Commissioner and Chair on this. Uh, thank you, Fred. Um, let's move on to, uh, Paul Higgins. Paul, are you, uh, available to comment? Harry, is Paul not, uh?
Um, Paul should be here with us.
I'm unmuted now, I hear.
Oh, great.
Okay, nice, Paul.
Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, good, Paul Higgins, Commissioner. Um, I I just think for this particular location, which basically the regulations are saying requires thirty four parking spaces and we're going to, or the applicant would like us to reduce that requirement to sixteen or less than, a little less than half, is too ambitious a plan for the amount of space that you've got there. And even with the additional Giovanni's and Richland areas, I don't believe anyone going in to get a pack of cigarettes or a lottery ticket is going to park in those locations. They're gonna park on the side street if the other spaces on the property are taken, which is just gonna exacerbate the congestion problem that, uh, Joe Chadwick mentioned before, but I don't see why we should approve anything that exacerbates or worsens what's the, what's currently going on now. So I'm basically opposed.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh, Marcy, are you, uh, available for comment?
I'll comment, you know, it's it's a tough one. Um, I'll try to be succinct. Um, you know, I I agree with Joe Chadwick that, you know, the parking issue, I've driven by there many times and I've been thinking about it a lot and, you know, the the traffic I see is is because of Shelley's, not because of the gas station. And, you know, you're not adding building area to what's already there, you know, it's an existing nonconforming use that been functioning satisfactorily. I don't, I don't think that the traffic at the gas station is necessarily causing the problem. So to me, the the question is, does changing the way you use the gas station by providing an additional service instead of a maintenance function, is that gonna significantly increase the traffic? And and does that circulation happen in in an unsafe manner? And, you know, the the comment that I really go back to is, I think if people are driving by the gas station, they see that there's too many cars there, they're not gonna stop. And it's just gonna be, there's gonna be a threshold and it's gonna be a function of the site's ability to get people in and out and the road's ability to have them turn onto the road. Um, you know, I I don't think the 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 count necessarily of spaces is necessarily, you know, a a driving factor here. To me, it's a little bit more about, you know, a a person's right to use their property and to conduct the business. So I have a really hard time denying, you know, denying on the, you know, when I think about that. And I think that, you know, the improvement making or improvements, I think if you control some of the timing for the neighbors or the hours, you know, as a way to kind of help remediate it, you know, but I I feel like a lot of the issue is they're being penalized because Shelley's is so successful and I don't think that that's fair to them. So, you know, that that's really where I sit. I'm, I think I'm, you know, I'm struggling with it, but I think I'm basically in favor of it, um, for the reasons I said.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much, John Luss, Chair. Um, all right, I guess I'll give you my comments on it, uh, as I'm the last one. And I'm 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 negative on 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 the project. I I'm sympathetic to both the owner and the operator, but I think it's just too much for one site. I I I I think the the improvements to the gas station are going to increase the traffic and, uh, I think it's, you know, I think it's just going to make, uh, a a bad system, uh, situation worse. I think, uh, it'll be negatively impacting to the downtown district. I think it's similarly impacting to the adjacent residential. Um, I don't think it complies with six point five point one in our in our regulations and I, um, I just think it's a bad precedent to set, you know, in zoning. And and I and I think whatever we do here, um, is gonna be permanent for the site. And, uh, we opened a public hearing to get more information and support for the application. And we've got gotten comments from the public, we've gotten comments from the applicants and and we got a a letter that's supposed to im- improve the parking that that is not legally binding or permanent. So I I I don't see, you know, I was negative about it initially and I don't see anything that's come up to change that. So I, I think my vote would have to be uh, negative on this. And I don't know where that leaves us. Um, Harry, you had put a, uh, you had put something together for us, a resolution. And I I wonder if we could speak to that at this point in time.
Okay. Uh, Harry Smith Town Planner, um, based on the consensus, the, uh, was expressed by the commission previously prior to the public hearing, the reopening, uh, that, uh, I think the vote was again pretty close, the struggle, um, to deny the direction given to me by the commissioner was to prepare a resolution for denial. So I did do that. Um, this goes back a couple of months, so I can share my screen and show that if you'd like.
Okay.
So I should be able to see, uh, what's entitled draft resolution, one sixty five, one ninety five Main Street, special exception for retail convenience store, application number nineteen dash ten point ten. Um, and several whereas clauses here, uh, just, um, referring to the application that was made, the documents and materials, all having been considered by the commission. Um, commission again considered all of the submitted documents, staff reports, um, testimony of the applicant representatives, testimony received during the public hearing, uh, statement that section six five of zoning regulations requires an a statement that section 65 of the zoning regulations requires an additional 17, 18 parking spaces. Whereas the applicant has testified neighboring business owner Richlands located is willing to accommodate. You probably want to add in here the offer by Giovanni's as well. And can suggest some wording there in a minute. And whereas the applicant has testified parking is available, park and ride lot. Again, this was verbal. I don't think there was anything that I believe, remember was offered by Richlands. Applicants testified willing to provide pickup and drop off vehicles. This was again another statement made by the applicant. They would do that for the motor vehicle repair business. And presentation of testimony on existing non-street parking used at least on a warm season basis by homeowners and other business in the area. Presenting here a number of findings, the approval requires the commission consider that in this section, there was the modification section as well as special exception criteria. The amount of cars potentially parked on the property waiting repair will not be reduced by the applicant's offer of pickup and drop off. Number three, the proposals presented by the applicant regarding availability of off-site parking do not provide a sufficient guarantee, number of spaces available are too distant from the site to be usable. I think that still stands with the Giovanni offer based on the fact that it's not an easement. It's just an offer revoked, as I stated. Pre-existing usage of on-street parking spaces in the main facility will prevent availability of them at some points. And based on testimony presented by the commission, based on testimony presented by the commission, therefore would find that respect to section 611 F2, established development pattern of the neighborhood would be damaged by the approval of special exception for modification parking requirements. So then would be a statement that now therefore be resolved, the application is designed for the following reasons. The application fails to adequately address requirements of section 65I and 98F. The reasons denouemented in the findings noted above and additional reasons that may be found in the record of the public hearing and deliberations. So that is what I have and we could tweak one of the whereas clauses here to refer to the offer, additional offer by Giovanni's. So I probably should add right in here after this. One, two, three, four, fifth, whereas, another whereas, which could say whereas the applicant has further submitted testimony that parking on a non-permanent, non-guaranteed basis offered by Giovanni's auto of, ends with B, I can't remember the name, but I'm going to look it up. Bradley Street. So that's what I put together.
All right. John Lust, Chair. I think we should probably vote on this tonight. And so let's, let's take a vote. And Harry, do you think you could take that down off your screen?
Sure, sorry.
That's okay. So why don't we go through the members again and take a vote on this particular resolution unless any of you have a comment on it?
Someone make a motion? Is there a motion on the floor already?
No, you're right. Can I, can I get a motion on this particular resolution?
I'll make the motion that the, we accept the resolution and decline the applicant's application.
Technical point, Chairman, is that as amended by the additional whereas clause?
Yes, we have to add the as amended.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with that, as amended.
Then this is Paul Higgins, Commissioner. I will second that.
Listen.
With the amendment.
With the amendment. Thank you, Paul. Okay, with that, with that motion then made, can we, then can we take a vote on this particular thing? And I guess we'll start with Joe Chadwick.
How do you vote? Joe Chadwick opposes the motion.
Okay.
Put him in the other way?
No, he's right.
Okay.
And Fred Russo?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Paul Higgins?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Marcy?
I'm a little confused, but I think I oppose the motion. I'd like to see the project go forward.
You oppose the motion.
Just a point of clarification, the motion is to deny based on the resolution as amended. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I would vote also with the motion to deny.
So to approve?
Yes. Okay. So.
Okay, Chuck Andrews. John, can I take back the chair role?
Yes. John Lust, Chair. Yes, I give it back to you, Chair.
Okay. Okay. So then we'll move through the rest of the agenda. Under Old Business, item number two. It's statewide development, 41 Branded Road, Fort Lauderdale subdivision. And I understand we're still not ready to schedule a public hearing on that one. I believe you previously authorized, Harry, me to set a public hearing date. But I understand the applicants aren't ready. In fact, we brought the application. Is that correct, Harry?
That's correct. And just for a point of clarification here, items two, three, and four, under Old Business, were accepted for the record on the 21st, set it to be accepted. And I believe on two, three, and four, for all of them, the commission authorized staff in conjunction with the chair to set the public hearing dates.
And so we're not ready to do that on two yet or three? Or any of those or what?
Three is, there is a complication in that I believe a variance would be required for the actual house, which is being sought and the applicant is seeking to change the application to just reflect the special exception for the grading within 100 feet of the critical course. So that could go ahead on the 18th. And I believe that's what we're going to do. As long as you're okay with that, Mr. Chairman. And we would need to put the legal ad in, I think, on Monday next week.
Okay. So it looks like I don't have a tree to likely be at our next meeting on the meeting day. And then item number four, again, we accept it. We haven't scheduled a public hearing. I understand you're in wetlands at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the new business and items number one and two are Title Basin, 46 Indian Neck Avenue, and that's the residential development. They presented a, it came before us informally. I think at our last meeting or the meeting before. And you have a suggested public hearing date for that one, Harry?
Again, Harry Smith Town Planner, yes, I do. There's a 35-day notification period regarding the PDD modification to the DEP. So to provide for that, we could not set a public hearing any earlier than the 2nd of July. So I'm going to suggest that as the date for the public hearing. And the site claim to this meeting day.
Okay. And again, that was the conversion from the, from the M to a residential development.
That's correct.
And then items three, four, and five, Mariners Landing. That's Anchor Reef. Again, we've had informal discussions with them and they've submitted applications for PDD modifications and subdivision, the site claim, coastal site claim. Do you have a suggested date for those?
It may be, it was inadvertent, but we did not receive the civil engineering plans. We were trying to get those out to the DEP today. We just received this, I believe, very late yesterday afternoon against Harry Smith Town Planner. So I would ask that the commission perhaps to defer to the 18th, the setting of the public hearing day. Probably looking at the 16th because of the, again, the 35-day DEP notification requirement. But I just want to make sure of all the plans and documents so we can get what we need out to DEP on time. So it would really depend on the applicant getting us the plans fast enough.
Okay, Chuck Andrews, Chair. Great. So is that okay with everyone that you can defer to Harry and myself to schedule a public hearing? Looks like it will be July 16th, but we don't know that for sure because it's contingent on receiving additional material over there. So John Lust, is that, are you okay with that?
John Lust, Commissioner, yes, I'm fine with that. Yes.
Joe Chadwick, are you okay with that?
Joe Chadwick's agreement.
Chuck Andrews, Chair. Joe Vayuz, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am. Joe Vayuz will agree.
And Marcy Palusi, are you okay with that?
Marcy Palusi, I agree.
Okay, I agree as well. Okay. So then that brings us to other business. Item number one is a discussion about interpretation of section 7.12B.
Again, Harry Smith Town Planner, did have a discussion with Jim Frito, the attorney for, was representing someone who's interested in the interpretation. And based on the possible need to get some input from the town council, he has agreed to delay discussing this to the 18th.
Okay, great. So we can delay that to the 18th. Harry, one thing, I did look at his question. I would like to, one thing I'd like to look at is maybe the minutes of the prior approval for this, if we can dig those out. And also any minutes surrounding the adoption of the regulation. See what they say. It has to do with the term, what the, what the term maximum building site means for self-storage.
Okay, we'll do the research.
Great. Item number two, the time extension request?
We have received time extension requests for the two approvals for the subdivision. One is for the open space residential development, which was application number 15-5.8. Again, that approval was originally approved in July 29, 2015. So it's to run out at the end of July of this year. And we also received the time extension requests for the associated subdivision application approval. That's number 15-5.9, same timeframe. Well, actually was approved one day later on the 30th of July. I asked the applicant's attorney, Mr. Lee, who I think was in the meeting earlier. I don't know if he wants to say anything, but I do not see him on the line any longer here. But I did ask him if there was a reason. I think it was just simply that the applicant has not gotten to this project yet. So they were just looking for an extra five years.
Okay. So he hasn't done anything yet?
Uh, no.
Is, has anything happened in the area? Any change of circumstances?
Not that I know of. I will say though, the wetlands, associated wetlands approval, I believe there's been a change in the regs that allow that to float, if you will, with the the planning commission approval of timeframe for their application approvals. If you grant an extension, that will be automatically granted an extension as well.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the time, I guess it's a five-year time extension request for these two applications, the 271 Brushy Place, we're on open space subdivision.
Joe Vayuzo approves the extension.
Okay. So Joe, I'll take that as a motion by Joe Vayuzo to approve the five-year extension. Is there a second?
Joe Chadwick seconds.
Joe Chadwick seconds. Any further discussion? We'll go through the list. John Lust, are you in favor?
John Lust in favor.
Joe Chadwick?
Judge Chadwick in the affirmative.
Joe Vayuzo?
Joe Vayuzo approves.
Marcy?
Marcy Palusi approves.
And Chuck Andrews, Chair, also approved. Okay, we have something?
No, was that for both?
Yes, I was for both.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Item number three, a bond release for 906 West Main Street?
Again, Mr. Chairman, Harry Smith Town Planner, we're still working out the details of that and not ready to recommend the release at this time.
Okay. So we'll disable that item. Item number four, appointment of a new zoning enforcement officer.
Ah, so we come to this. The town has hired a gentleman named Dan Brennan as a new zoning enforcement officer who began work last Thursday. I don't know if he is hung in here with us. I believe he has. So we can unmute him and I'm going to let Dan introduce himself. Other than, I would be further to say that he has several years' experience as a zoning enforcement inspector, I believe, in the city of Bridgeport. And has some sense of background in construction, but I'll just let Dan say a couple of words if he will. I think you're on, Dan.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dan Brennan. I started in the zoning enforcement office last week. It's been a nice transition working with Harry and everybody else in the office. Looking forward to meeting everybody. I come from the city of Bridgeport. I live in Fairfield, Connecticut. I've worked in Bridgeport as a zoning inspector for the last six years. In between that, I've done a lot of construction. I'm a certified home inspector as well. And I'm looking forward to getting started in Branford.
Chuck Andrews, Chair, well, Dan, we're happy you're aboard. We certainly need you and hope you're out there inspecting and getting people in line, right?
Yep, I'm looking forward to it.
That's great. So Chuck Andrews, Chair, Harry, what do we need to, what sort of motion do we need to make this official or do we, or what's our deal?
You would need a motion to accept or designate Mr. Brennan as a zoning enforcement officer. I'd also like to suggest you formally designate Caitlin Piazza as the sort of backup zoning enforcement officer, if you will. Because that is also her role as it was Rich Stecker, her predecessor. So when Mr. Brennan is not in the office or on vacation, the responsibility is on Caitlin.
Great. Okay. So we'll do that as two motions. First, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Dan Brennan as zoning enforcement officer for the town of Branford and the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission?
John Lust, Commissioner, I'll make that motion, Chuck.
Okay. Chuck Andrews, Chair, John makes the motion. Is there a second?
Marcy Palusi will second it.
Chuck Andrews, Chair, second by Marcy. Any further discussion? All in favor? John Lust, are you in favor?
John Lust, Commissioner, yes, I'm in favor.
Chuck Andrews, Chair, Joe Chadwick, are you in favor?
Joe Chadwick in the affirmative.
Chuck Andrews, Chair, Joe Vayuzo, are you in favor?
Yes, Joe Vayuzo in favor.
Chuck Andrews, Chair, Marcy, are you in favor?
Marcy Palusi in favor.
And I am also in favor of appointing Mr. Brennan as a zoning enforcement officer. And we have a motion also to appoint Caitlin Piazza as our backup zoning enforcement officer to assume the duties when Mr. Brennan is unavailable.
Joe Vayuzo in favor of that motion.
Okay, motion made by Joe. Is there a second?
Second by Joe Chadwick.
Second by Joe Chadwick. Okay, we'll run through the list again. Chuck Andrews, Chair, John Lust, are you in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick in the affirmative.
Joe Vayuzo? Joe Vayuzo?
Joe Vayuzo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy Paluzzi in favor.
Chuck Andrews also in favor. Okay, congratulations to both.
Thank you.
Harry Smith Town Planner, I just would like to express the fact I'm thrilled and delighted we're at full staff again.
Yay. Okay. Uh, item number five, bond establishment for 3 Watchers Avenue.
Uh, I'm going to defer to Caitlin, who has been handling this one.
Uh, Caitlin Piazza, Assistant Town Planner. Um, uh, Nick Fisher submit, well, Jim Preddy on behalf of Nick Fisher submitted, um, a request to establish a landscaping bond for 3 Watchers, um, Avenue in the amount of $5,000. Um, I did a little digging around and used what our PD CEO had been, uh, using to establish the bond amount and I came up with $5,200. Um, I emailed that amount and the breakdown to, uh, both Jim Preddy and Nick Fisher. Um, spoke to Jim Preddy about it, he thought it would be fine. I haven't gotten a confirmation from Nick Fisher, but he's on the line, if there was any discussion.
Um, I see Chuck Andrews Chair, I see Mr. Fisher, yes, he's on you.
Trying to get back in there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, that's no problem, $5,200 is fine.
Chuck Andrews Chair, great. Okay then, um, anything else, Caitlin?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay, is there a motion to establish a bond for 3 Watchers Avenue in the amount of $5,200?
Motion by Joe Chadwick.
Uh, motion by Joe, uh, is there a second?
Thank you for Marcy.
We'll give it to Marcy. Marcy seconds, uh, we'll go through the list. Uh, John Lust, are you in favor?
Uh, John Lust, Commissioner, yes, I'm in favor.
Joe Chadwick?
George Chadwick's in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
Joe Vayuzo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy Paluzzi in favor.
Chuck Andrews also in favor. Okay, item number six, planner's report, do we have anything, Harry?
Uh, really don't, with the exception of, um, you may or may not be aware, there's a statute that, uh, requires every five years, the, uh, the town, um, adopt an affordable housing plan. Um, there's been no real guidance, uh, to date about that. Uh, recently, the Department of Housing, um, uh, put forth a pot of money that towns could apply for to start, uh, developing those plans. Um, we're intending to submit an application for that, we have to get a resolution from the Board of Selectmen to do that. Um, so that's going to be in the works this month. Um, and there will be guidance on it, what the plan should consist of. I think there is a consultant hired by the state to develop that. I think Caitlin and I both sat through a webinar and, uh, understand that that consultant will be developing the guidelines, but they probably won't be ready till November or sometime in the fall. So, uh, we'll give you more updates on that as we progress, but just wanted to mention that for the record.
Great, Chuck Andrews Chair, thanks, Harry, anything else?
Nope, not at the moment.
Okay, great. Anyone else have anything? If not, does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that motion, John Lust.
John Lust, you made the motion, John. Motion made by John, is there a second?
Okay, I made the motion.
That's right, is there a second?
No second.
Uh, Marcy seconds, uh, John, are you in favor?
John Lust, I'm in favor.
Joe Chadwick in favor.
Joe Chadwick in favor.
Joe Vayuzo?
Vayuzo in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy Paluzzi in favor.
Chuck, I am also in favor. Okay, so we are adjourned, so thank you, everyone.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.